Okay, we'll come back to order here. The meeting will continue now. We have finished our executive session. We have no public hearing this evening. Minutes. Do we have any minutes this evening? I guess we do not. Okay. Next Select Board meeting, Monday, March 12th, 7:00 PM here. It will be livestreamed. Upcoming Select Board workshops. We have a workshop on Monday, February 26th at 6:30 here. That has to do with the library and we'll talk a little bit more about that. We have an agenda item coming up on that. And the budget process starts Thursday, March 1st, starting at 5:30. Everybody's going to be all excited about that, I'm sure.
You betcha.
Town office will be closed on Monday, February 19th, which is next Monday in observance of President's Day. Do we have some agenda changes?
I have a proposed agenda change under New Business Item H. I would like to move it before Item D and after Item C.
Okay, does that meet with everybody's approval? That's the orthogonal imagery issue for the assessing department carries here for that.
Yep, yes.
Without objection, then we will make that agenda change. Public comment should be directed at issues not under discussion on this evening's agenda. Comment from the public will be welcome prior to each agenda item. Further comment will be granted by permission of the board. All public comments should be brief and to the point. Do we have anybody who wishes to make public comment this evening? Seeing none, we will move on to the town manager's report.
Yes, as you alluded to, we've been working for the past month on the budget. It really has taken a lot of time. We've cut about $250,000 out of the budget in order to get it down to LD1. That meant cutting a lot of projects and a lot of things that we would like to move forward, but in order to make that LD1 number, we've cut some of them and you will see them when we get into the budget process. The library also that's taken up, and there were two things that have taken up a huge amount of my time, has been the budget and working on the library stuff. We did finally, last week, I think it was, was it last weekend? We finally got the contract nailed down.
Yeah.
The lawyer had a batch of problems, mostly having to do with insurance coverage and the way we're covered, you know, by MMA and by their insurance in the contract. So we've gotten all those pieces worked out. And so that contract has been signed. Is, one is, says in my report, one kind of complicating factor in this contract is that typically, some of the work that the construction manager is doing now would not take place until the next phase of the project. So it's beyond the, beyond the work we're paying the construction manager for, some of the engineering and design work is being done at a much higher level so that the construction manager can give us a, get us a better price based on actual construction and engineering facts. And while it's not going to be drawn out to any great extent, there's some decisions that have to be made about the structure of the building and the HVAC system and some other things. So in order to do that, both the construction engineer and structural engineer people and also the HVAC people that would be designing the HVAC system need to put in some time now upfront rather than in the next phase, which is the design, which is normally the design, I think it's, not could design consult. No, we're in schematic design now. The next step is usually is the, is the design development phase.
Right.
Is the next, the next step. So those two phases have kind of blended together to some extent.
If I could, basically what it means is that the number that we will have to pay the architect prior to the vote is higher than it would have been with Reed. But the absolute number will still be about the same because we just have to do some of the work earlier to get the better estimates.
And it may, it may not be, there's some work that Steve is doing that's going to be less costly. It may, maybe it's a shifting of where those responsibilities are going to come in because, you know, Steve has the benefit of the work that Dick Reed did in the past. So he's been working, he didn't have to start at ground zero. He started with all of the work that Dick Reed had done. In the end, he'll get, he'll get the total amount that he would get normally, but it's how that allocates out is a little bit in flux.
Quick question. Is the amount that the contract has gone up just the 5,000 that we put towards the construction manager?
No, that's not part of this contract at all.
The contract hasn't gone up. It's just a shifting of the payments.
It's a shifting of the payments.
So, in other words, the original contract, I believe Dick's was, was going to be 15% of it would have been payable before the vote. This one, it's going to be 22% that's payable before the vote. So it's just a shifting. It doesn't, in the end, as long as the vote passes, the amount paid him will be the same.
Yep.
It's just a shifting of it.
For those, for those two phases, in the, in Dick Reed's contract, it was a 15% and 20% phase for the design development phase. And it'll still add up to 35%. Am I doing my math right?
Yeah.
It still adds up to 35%. It's just 22%, potentially 22% could come, get paid at this phase and the balance of the 35% would be paid in the next phase.
So Rick, I want to point out, just pursuant to discussions we had in our work groups about the library, that when we look at the second paragraph, which is about the
Underbudget.
The monies that we're talking about to pay for the road reconstruction and parking reconfiguration that is associated with the library project, that that money is not included in the $3 million that we've talked about allocating toward the library and that although in what you've written here, you're talking about a reallocation of tax money that we have from other places that we are looking at other ways to acquire that money that don't impact, wouldn't necessitate a reallocation of tax money.
And it, yeah, it means we're not doing, potentially not doing other things.
That could be seen as increasing the overall cost of a library project above and beyond the 3 million that the voters feel strongly about.
Can I ask a question on that? And I know that we'll probably get into it because the best rebuttal for, for that, and though it's a valid point, is that the citizens at town meeting can shoot any or all aspects of the budget out.
Yep.
Is this one like where we had last time, in the last budget, we had our, or maybe it wasn't the last one, but when we did fiber, the proposed fiber, we had that as its own standalone budget line, purposely so it stood out to the citizens so we could have a more robust discussion about it? Do we anticipate doing the same thing?
No, no, it's built into the budget. But if for some reason, the, the library bond were to fail, which hopefully that doesn't happen, but if that were to ever happen, then you could go back in at the budget and, and take out those items that are allocated for the road reconstruction and the parking.
And we did that last year, if you recall, we, because we got some information before town meeting that the public works number was going to be a little lower and we amended the article on the town meeting floor to lower the amount.
So, a question, knowing that some of the monies for this parking adjustments up there will be of that 250 we had for undesignated funds, and the original thought that was brought up by some of us, me being one of them, is to chip away at our previously untaken care of capital improvement issues. Are any of those that, will there be any of those in the budget?
There, there were some in the budget, but they got cut out to meet LD1.
So we're going to go a little further behind then because we're taking care of a parking lot?
Well, that's not
But we don't understand what you're saying.
It's not all, part of the parking lot, part of that, the way it works out is 80% of the construction, of the road intersection construction is, will be covered by the state DOT with a grant. So we'll, we'll get money back from that. And there's also, there's also $40,000 in the TIF fund. That is where it's eligible, that's an eligible expense. So there's a revenue, on the revenue side, there's $40,000 of TIF money that can be used.
But that goes sort of back to Tom's point about the smoke and marrow. If, if it's only supposed to be $3 million and we're taking another 250,000.
Well, remember, remember that the, the motion that this board voted on was a $3 million cost, not including parking.
I thought it was not to exceed 3 million.
But it still was not including parking.
Including the parking and the road intersection.
Mostly what I'm sensitive to is that in the interest of making sure that this passes and knowing that there is significant public sentiment about the amount of money that we spend, I wouldn't want to create an illusion to the public that we're allocating 3 million, well, we're going to bond a million and a half and try to fundraise a million and a half and then also exceed that budget by whatever amount the parking is because I think people might see all of it together as associated with the library even because it clearly says here that these are things we need for the library project. And my point is, we have discussed and are pursuing other ways to come up with that money, including extra fundraising, because we're sensitive to the impact on the taxpayer.
And a lot of this will come out as we get into the budget and see the budget development and see where the numbers fall, which is, stay tuned for that.
Yeah.
Well, my last thing on it is, when we did our library proposal, 2.3 point, whatever point oh you want to call it, the last time we proposed it, it was one of the things that we had talked about quite a bit. How do we separate out the building from the additional road work in such a clear way that it doesn't feel like we've, we have convinced them that it was a $4 million library at the time where we're not rolling the costs of this additional stuff in? And if I remember correctly, the reason that it kind of conceptually got resolved was the entire building of that structure can be done with the road currently how it is, that we don't get the additional parking out of it, we don't get that intersection being more user friendly, it doesn't add that additional accoutrement around the library.
And I suspect those are things that we need to attract votes to pass the project.
I think so.
So, and how do we balance that with?
Well, one of the things that will happen is, and then I want to move on after this, but the, the state funding of the road, we will have, as I understand it, a decision on that prior to the vote. So the voters will know how much of that may be funded by the state. Because it is a state road that runs in front of the library, whether that, that project has been approved or not. Right, so, okay, I think we should move on because a lot of this is budget discussion, so.
Well, it doesn't seem like we've had a lot of measurable and, you know, accumulating snow, nothing like the 10 feet of snow we had one year, but we've had enough snowstorms that it's been enough of a problem. It just seems like the high, the public works guys are out all the time. I'm not sure if they're out again. Is it freezing up again, Mike?
It's dry, it's freezing, but it's dry.
Yeah, okay. So they've gone through a lot of sand and salt. We just got, we're ordering some more sand and more salt, I believe, both, because we've gone through a lot of it and we just don't know how the rest of the winter is going to go. Ken, unless you can get, unless you can tell me something, I don't know.
Can I ask a quick question on that? Do you buy like futures in sand and salt? Just because like, if it's winter time and you want to buy a snowmobile, you're paying more because there's snow on the ground. That's why, you know, people that are smart, they buy the snowmobile in the summer. It doesn't matter one way to the other when you buy it?
We've got a bid, who we, who bid this all can supply us and actually getting some cheaper that we had to bid through.
Okay.
And we're also, we're also racking up a batch of overtime as well because a lot of the storms are, with the exception of the one we just had, but even that one went, the guys had to work into the night to get it cleaned. We've got, racked up a lot of, a lot of OT. The ambulance contract, we've been working on the ambulance contractor over the past month or two. The four managers have been working on rewriting that and writing in some level of service expectations that we hope to bring to the ambulance review committee at their next meeting. I can't remember when that is, but we have an ambulance review committee meeting coming up.
I think it's toward the end of the month, but I don't remember.
So we're, we've been working on that as well. It's, as you know, it's a very complicated issue and not easy to solve. Same thing is on the Midco solid waste. Again, that's also a very complicated and there's no easy solution, but we've been working on the redesign of the facility that will allow the facility to be more efficient. One of the problems that, that we're up against at least now is the bottom has fallen out of the recyclable market to the point where our recyclables were almost paying the same amount of, to get rid of recyclables as we are, or to get rid of trash.
That doesn't sound crazy and we'll get into it later on reports, but that is insane compared to how it used to be. They would get a rebate back annually.
Speaking to Rick's ambulance story and Ken's, I just looked up and it's the 27th at 5 o'clock at Hope.
Okay, yeah.
If anybody wants to.
They don't have live streaming, do they?
No, they don't.
Because I, it was great when you did it at Camden. I was able to watch the whole thing from my kitchen with the kids.
Yep. And la, I think, wait a minute, I got, I might have something else after that. Yes, I do, okay. The livestream, we, we went through and actually looked at how many people are actually watching the livestream? And it's pretty amazing. It's taken a while, but you know, you can see the six-month average of views is 173 people in the past six months watch meetings. And that's bumped up by a school board meeting that drew 403 views.
Was that the one that I got fired at?
And then there was
Yes!
Then there was another one.
Take the cake.
You get the highest viewer. And then there was another one, there's 188 views. But even like the library workshops, you know, they're in the hundreds of people that are watching the, the meetings that have, anything that has to do with the library. So the reality is, is there's, there's never people in the audience, or hardly ever, but people are actually watching online. And, you know, the idea that people should have to come to the meeting to know what's going on, you know, that's, that's a, it's a national trend that people are not coming to meetings and they are not going to come to meetings. It's only going to get worse. And so the, the fact is, we need to make inroads into other means of getting the information to residents and taxpayers so they're informed about what's going on in their town and in-town government. So the livestream is actually working very, very well. I mean, one feature of it that I wish it was, we did a better job at, I think there's only 77 or 80 subscribers. Yeah, it's not many subscribers. And one of the facts about the livestream is, once you subscribe, that you automatically get an, get an email every time that we post a new meeting. And then when the meeting goes live, all, like when, when she hit the live button there, all 77 or whatever subscribers got an email saying the Select Board meeting is live now. So all they have to do is click on it. So it's a way for the public to engage in a, in a means that is, makes it more convenient for them because they're not, they're not going to come to our meeting and sit and listen to me drone on about god knows what. So, but they are watching.
They're going to sit at home and listen to you drone on.
Right. Oh, no, they'll, they'll fast forward right through it. So, lastly, the fire department has been very busy with calls and motor vehicle accidents. This is the time of the year where we have a lot of them.
Could I interrupt for a minute to go back to the livestream? It seems to me it'd be relatively easy to include a notice with taxes or a handout when we have voting in June or something like that.
Good idea, yeah.
You know, at least raise people's awareness, so.
Whenever we send out an announcement, you can add text and information with it. So it's not just the date and the leak, but it's also whatever you want to draw attention to.
Well, to get people to enroll.
Right.
That's the way to do it and then have your phone bing when, you know.
And also, I've noticed that I have to click more on my phone to get to livestream through the website than I do on a desktop. It's not that it doesn't show up, it's just you have to click more through the, the mobile webpage than you do on the desktop webpage. It just doesn't show up. You have to click departments or whatever and it pops up there. But on the desktop webpage, it's right there off on the corner.
But lastly, the fire department has been very busy. They've actually responded to three different fires, I believe, at Fisher Engineering in Rockland over the past four months or something. I don't know what's going on there. They, we get an amazing response from our fire department. They, the guys, they're beating the curve and thank God they are because they're, they're out there all the time. When the calls come in, they manage to get, they manage to get to the call and in, sometimes with more firefighters than the career departments. One issue that came up, and I thought it was a good idea to remind people about their chimneys and carbon monoxide, was there was a fire that, actually it was a visiting nurses' call, visiting nurses' thing, the visiting nurse happened to go to a house and the person said that they weren't hungry or whatever it was. What, they went to the house, I believe it was, and they found out that the house was full of carb, carbon monoxide and because the carbon monoxide detector wasn't working and the chimney was so clogged up from the furnace. So the fire department evacuated, got rid of the, the carbon monoxide and then, you know, ran a thing through the chimney to open it up. But it could have been a very serious, a very serious issue if the, number one, if the, I think it was visiting nurses or hotline, the Meals on Wheels person hadn't been really paying attention and the fire department wasn't able to respond as quickly as they did. It could have been very serious, so. It's a reminder to folks to keep their, keep their carbon monoxide detectors up and running. So we had a resignation. Jamie Francamano, our Planning and Community Development Director, has resigned to take another job at Midcoast as the Executive Director in Midcoast Regional Planning. He's going to continue to help us through a contract with Midcoast Regional Planning to work with the Ordinance Review Committee and the Comprehensive Plan Committee through June with Comp Plan and through the end of whenever ORC finishes up. And I'm going to begin the process to find a replacement in the next couple of weeks. And also, we've hired a new administrative assistant for the Public Works Department. Her, her name is Brandy Hare and she will be starting, she started full-time today. And Sue Dates, who supposedly retired back at the end of September, I think, was it?
That Groundhog Day.
Yeah, yeah. Will be retiring very soon. She's sticking around just to provide training and any assistance that Brandy will need and then she'll, she'll be retiring. Thank you, Sue, for staying with us and helping out, so.
I had a question. It seems how it's not noticed on here, is the police department's not listed, but are they still out looking for streetlights that aren't working?
Yeah.
Is that why they're not on here tonight?
They're out looking at streetlights, yeah.
I thought you took care of that.
I just don't have anything in there.
No.
Okay, any further questions for the manager? If not, on
If not, on to new business. First item under new business is acknowledgement of gifts to the town. We received an anonymous donation of $2,000 for general assistance. And as Rick writes in his notes, this is an annual gift from this particular donor. And that's so much appreciated. These gifts for general assistance allow us to help people who may not meet the guidelines in other ways for general assistance. And it's, it's nice when we have generous people in town. There are many who give some money to that every year.
Even though that individual won't become public knowledge, you still know who it is and you can send them a very nice thank you note.
Oh, yes, yep.
Great.
Yeah, the note will be sent out. And we have received a $6,000 check from the Senator, Center for Furniture Craftsmanship as a payment in lieu of taxes. And I'd like to acknowledge those particularly because it tells us that the many nonprofit organizations who are not obligated to pay property taxes in town still see a benefit to the town services that they do receive, such as police and fire protection, and see fit to make a contribution toward that. And that's very much appreciated.
I'd like to, along the same line here, I'd like to make some acknowledgements in the form of motions, several motions. So this is, you guys can look these over and pass it down. Give one to Linda. This is a little bit off of the gifts to the town, but we have had some projects over the last year that I think have contributed to the keeping Rockport beautiful. And so I'd like to start off with my first motion.
Can I, before you start that, can we have a motion to accept the gifts that I mentioned?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
I move to accept the anonymous gift donation for general assistance in the amount of $2,000 and further move to accept with gratitude for both of them, the $6,000 from Center for Furniture Craftsmanship as a payment in lieu of taxes.
Second.
Any further discussion on that motion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, that motion is unanimous. Okay.
So first motion would be that the Rockport Select Board directs the town manager to write a letter of appreciation to Dorsey Gardner and Nee Wrong, thanking them for their work in restoring and preserving the historic building located at 162 Russell Avenue, which is in the Village Center. That's the old CMCA building. And my motive here is just, again, that building could have easily been torn down and, you know, just turned into a condominium or something. And I think that these folks did a lot of work in preserving one of our historic buildings. I would just like to recognize their effort on that.
Are you gonna do these motions singly or?
I can do them, well.
I can read them all out and we'll just.
Okay, well, unless.
Unless there's any objection.
Then I would, second motion, Rockport Select Board directs the town manager to write a letter of appreciation to the Rockville Community Chapel Organization, thanking them for their work in restoring and preserving the historic church located in Rockville. I don't know if we formally thanked them after their presentation, but I thought it'd be nice to do that. And then finally, third motion, Rockport Select Board directs the town manager to write a letter of appreciation to Linda and Griffin Lesher, thanking them for their work in restoring and preserving the older building at 160 Russell Avenue in the Village Center and operating the Business Barn Swallow Books in that building. And again, this was an old building that had been occupied for a couple of years and they bought it and fixed it up and looks nice.
So if that was a motion, I'll make a second to that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion at all? I will say on, as far as the Rockville Chapel is concerned, I did go to their Christmas program. It was.
It was fun.
It was good. It was, it was packed. I mean, it's, I'd never seen a traffic jam in Rockville before. But there was a traffic jam that night and it was a wonderful program. Very well done. And it was very good. So, and, and they've done a lot of work. And that building is absolutely beautiful. I know you say you've performed there from time to time. It's really a nice building. They've done a nice job with it. And the more awareness we can raise of that, because the building is available for private events and things like that. For a small, you can't have a 400-person wedding there, but if it's a small intimate wedding, it's a very nice place for that, so. Any further discussion on the motion?
Just to the other select board members, if you come across, because I think this is a great idea that for very little money, we can recognize folks that are developing our town and I'm a fan.
Okay. All right, all in favor of the motion? Any opposed? Okay, thank you, Doug. Okay, committee applications. We have two committee applications to act on this evening for the Opera House Committee. We have Linda Greenlaw and Chris Fazzell. Linda happens to be here. I don't know why.
Greenlaw person. I don't know this Greenlaw person. Sounds shady.
And so, and we are gonna hear from the de facto chair. I don't know if you're chair or not at this point, but we. Pro team, okay. We have a, we have a report from the Opera House Committee coming up shortly, but, but we have two new applications for that committee. So Linda, I would invite you to make a brief statement about why you would like to do it or.
I guess mainly the reason I'd like to do it is I served on the committee for the 125th with Terry and the committee. And I really enjoyed doing the work and helping them. I've lived in Rockport all my life. This building has a lot of meaning to me. I've seen a lot of things come and go here. And I'd like to see the building keep going and produce income and be a lively part of the community.
Okay. Any questions of Linda? Do we have term expirations on these? I don't see them. You don't have the committee here. Okay, we may have to, that may have to be determined later.
It's sewer rates.
Okay, do we wanna, well, I'll await a motion.
I move to accept Linda Greenlaw's application for the Opera House Committee effective immediately with an expiration date to be determined. Second.
Any further discussion? You sure you want to add another thing to your plate, Linda? Linda does an awful lot for the town, but if she's willing to serve on this, I'm happy to support her. All in favor of the motion? Any opposed? Okay. Thank you very much for volunteering. And Chris Fazzell, is Chris here? Wish you'd come up to the, to the podium. We have Chris's application as well. I will point out that Chris is not a resident of Rockport, but in the past, we have for these committees been willing to entertain applications from those who have an interest in the community. So there's, there's certainly no prohibition on us approving somebody in that. It would be a problem if it was for one of the quasi-judicial committees, planning board, et cetera. But for an advisory committee, the select board, the select board has the ability to do that.
I used to be a Rockport resident. And my office is still here. My postal office box is still in Rockport.
And that's one of the, actually, you know, one of the reasons that we did that is that we do have people who, like yourself, will perhaps work in town and have an interest in the town and/or have some connection with the town who would like to serve on these committees. So if you want to give us a brief statement.
I did the architecture on this building back when it was done a while ago and all that. So I know it very well. And Linda's kept me up occasionally with a couple telephone calls and asking questions about it. I've been doing old buildings for 40 years or so here in Maine. And I just love them. And I thank you for the hat tip to Dorsey Gardner and Nee Wrong. It's also one of my projects because they, they did a wonderful thing in preserving that building and keeping it up and all that. And also, I don't know if you've noticed, but there's a skylight now in the cupola there. And they've left, they're leaving that on at night. And so it's just a little beacon in town now.
Any questions of Chris?
I just have one general question. Over 50% of your membership is existing Rockport residents. I think it was one of the few things that we had talked about as far as accepting a member who's not from the town, just that we've got a healthy amount of Rockport residents on the committee.
I believe Chris, yeah, Chris will be the only one that's not a Rockport resident.
Just down Union Street.
Perfect.
Any further discussion? If not, I'll await a motion.
I move to appoint Chris Fazzell to the Opera House Committee effective immediately with a expiration or term end date to be determined.
Second.
Any further discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, I see now. So thank you very much for volunteering your service. Okay, we had earlier said we would move item H up until this point, which is to consider purchasing orthogonal imagery for the assessing department. And Kerry is here to, and if, Rick, do you want to make any comments or you want to let Kerry?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think what, this is here because this came up after the budget was already done. I believe it was in July or August, but before we went to commitment. And in conversations with Kerry, he had mentioned that he had brought it up, that it was a possibility that we were gonna have to move this, we were gonna have to confront this in some, at some future date, not knowing that it was gonna be that, this future date within that, this budget year. And it was noticed that, that they were gonna do the flyover this, this spring, before all the leaves came out on the trees. And so the question for us was to, how to get that done. And one of, there were a couple of options was to just come to you and say, can we take it out of U F B? Or put it in as a, put it in the overlay account so that the money was there. And it doesn't, it, it, no, in, no impact on the overlay or on the, the.
U F B.
And no impact on the taxpayers, other than what was, what went into last year's budget. So my backup information explains what it is. Kerry, Kerry can explain a whole lot better than I can about what this ortho imagery is and does. So Kerry.
A while, a while ago, state and county entered into a program with the federal government to cost share on ortho imagery. It used to be an extremely, well, I guess it's still expensive, but now that we're sharing the expense with three other entities, brings it way down. And what the, what, what basically goes on is the county acquires a base level of imagery. And last time they flew in Knox County was five years ago. And the county bought 18-inch, so that was the base. And then we could buy up to get better resolution. So we bought up to six inches. And my expectation was that I would be able to see, the imagery would be clear enough, sharp enough so that I could see landmarks on the ground that proved not to be the case. I can kind of make them out. And what I'm talking about is many deeds, for example, will reference stone walls that, they go 630 feet along a stone wall until it intersects with another stone wall. And then it turns or crosses a stream. I can't see those stone walls and I can't see the streams. I can kind of make out where that stream might be. I can't make out where the stone walls might be. And I'm, so this year, I'm hoping that we'll buy up to three inches and that with that, I will, I will be able to see these things. And I'm told that that is the case. It's used for assessing for the, for the tax map editing that I mentioned. Planning uses it, code enforcement uses it, and public works use it.
And I use it all the time.
And you use Map Geo.
Oh, I use Map Geo, but the same data comes in, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Wait, so that's kind of a big deal. So if we do the three-inch, what I see on Map Geo will get better?
Yes.
You'll have access to top-notch stuff from your office and everyone will have even.
That same imagery goes onto Map Geo.
It's like a blessing and a curse.
Yeah, for sure.
Keep your yard clean.
Right.
Seriously.
I mean, there are times when, when Mike and I are out and, and we're trying to figure out where we are on, you know, we know where we are, but where right-ofways are, where property lines are and things like that. And it's, I mean, it's not accurate enough to like drive a stake in the ground yet, but at least it gets us in the ballpark. We had a complaint with a concern about a neighbor, a resident who was concerned about a tree coming down that was supposedly in the right-ofway. Well, when we went over there, we checked on the, we got onto Map Geo, checked, and the tree she was talking about is actually 50 feet, you know, outside of the right-ofway. So it's, it's in her yard clearly by 50 feet. But you could see the tree on the Map Geo, the tree she was talking about, and the property lines show up.
So if I'm not mistaken, this is 22,000?
That was the number that I saw. Is that correct? 22,000.
And the money is currently sitting where?
In the.
It's unbudgeted.
Unbudgeted.
Unbudgeted in the overlay, but it's.
So it was in the overlay, so therefore it's in the general fund, right?
Yeah, it's just, it's in the overlay account.
Where do we, how do we stand in the overall budget year-to-date? I mean, at the end of the year, how much are we gonna have left over?
Well, we're not gonna have as much as we usually do. You know, last year, we turned back, it was over 100 and some odd thousand, correct?
I don't know.
Yeah, I think.
Not my department.
Yeah, I think, I think we had, we had in excess of 100, I think it was 130,000 we ended up adding to our, our U F B last year, which that's money we didn't spend. Previous year, I think it was in the 200 range. This year, because of Anis Lane Bridge, and it seemed like there was another issue that came up that was unbudgeted. We're, we're not gonna have that kind of money, but this money is already there. And if, you can either take it out of the U F B and not spend it out of the, the overlay. And the money that's in the overlay will roll over and become part of the U F B.
Accounting-wise, the way I think we would handle it is I would overspend a line in my budget, a line that has zero in it. If you said it was to come out of the general fund, otherwise I don't know how it works with the overlay, with the U F B.
If we don't do this, how, how is your job impacted?
Well, it's more difficult to map. And, and also something that I learned today, because I heard it last week and didn't believe it, have a similar issue in Camden where it's not budgeted. And Joe Young, the guy at the Maine Geo Library, told me, well, I could budget for it next year and they can fly it next year, which is not how the program used to run. Knox County's all gonna be run, flown this year. But then he told me that. So I asked, Letitia Van Vuren, who does a lot of work with us, I asked her to speak with Joe and geek to geek, you know, and say, is, is that so? And she got back to me today and said, yes. So if you said no to this, we could budget for it next year if that, if, if that would be your pleasure.
How long is the data good for?
Well, I mean, as soon as somebody changes, you know, one of the things I do, for example, is I'll, I'll, one of the first things I'll do when I get the new photography is change the building silhouettes on the map. Find out where there are new buildings, add them, find out where buildings got taken off and take them off. So as soon as somebody puts up a new building, we begin to get out of date. So these are flown every five years. And ideally, what I, what you learn in classrooms is it should be every, you should refresh every three years. So we're going every five.
Okay, so the anticipation is that this will be good for five years?
Yes.
See, I have a sort of a question that goes over the boundaries. Are we going to be in any way utilizing this for your work in Camden?
Rockport money, no. Camden's gonna have its own map.
Using the program. Is, is there a way that that can be used over there?
I don't see how. I don't know if it was me because we're talking about Rockport photography.
Well, you know, it's a very fine line between one place and the other.
Well, but they, you know, you see, you see how I get the product. I get tiles for Rockport, period.
I'm just trying to figure out if there's a way that they're gonna be utilizing it through you.
Is Rockport, is Camden gonna buy their own?
Yeah.
And that, that was actually one of the questions. Is there any cost savings in bundling more Knox County bordering towns? Not, because I, I don't, I don't mind sharing some, I'm just curious if there's cost savings.
That's one of the reasons why I had trouble understanding Joe telling me that it could be run next year because that's one of the things that they tell us. So I don't think there can be more cost savings and I'm surprised that he gave us this option.
And again, this is my first budget season, so I'm a real novice at this. But if we decided not to buy it this year, does that mean there'd be $22,000 that we could use to repair a sidewalk or paint fog lines or something? Is that how this works?
Well, I mean, not, not really. I think. Well, I mean, not, not really. I think the, there's twenty-two thousand dollars that'll roll into the reserve, into the, not into, into the reserve, into the UFB.
Yeah.
And you can vote to spend money out of that, out of the UFB for projects like that.
So, you, okay, so theoretically, yes.
Theoretically, yes.
Theoretically, yeah. If you spend money on something, you can't spend it on something else.
Right.
Right.
So...
But if you don't spend money on, on, if you don't use the money in the, in the overlay, out of the overlay account, it will just roll into the reserve, so there'll be an extra twenty-two thousand dollars in the reserve. I don't, if we don't buy it now, I do not have an answer to, is there a way for us to convert what, the money that's in the UFB, that would roll into the UFB, and roll it into the budget as of, for next year?
Well, it sounds like Kerry just told us we can buy it next year.
Yeah, that's, that's what I learned, yeah.
Which is something, new information from what we had in the packet, that the packet basically said we have to buy it now, or we lose our chance. It sounds like that's...
Yeah, that was my understanding.
Exactly. No, that, and that was what I presented to Rick, so, which is why I asked Letitia to step in. I thought, I must not be understanding something here.
And typically, that's typically the way. They'll do the flyover, and everybody who's paid, they'll fly over.
Right. And then they move on to another county, another part of the state next year.
Now, will they fly again next year, or will they just sell you the data next year?
And I have no idea. I, I, it doesn't make any sense to me.
So, if we buy it next year, we're buying a data that's a year old.
That's what, that's what I'm wondering.
It could be, it could be, Tom. I, I don't know, right?
I, I guess just my concern again is that this has been an expensive year with Mount Pleasant and the Anis Lane Bridge, and, you know, I have an uncomfortable feeling going into the budget season. So, you know, if we could put it off a year, I'd be more comfortable with that.
But, but... It's money that's already been raised.
It's, it's, it's already been raised. So, if, if you put it off a year, it's, that's not going to help us with the budget.
Hang on a second. What do you mean it's money, it's already been raised?
In, in the overlay.
It's been raised in the overlay.
That's where I have a problem.
Yeah.
Because that's not what that account is for. And quite honestly, I'm, you know, if, if money was placed into the overlay account with the idea of buying, I have a real problem with that. That overlay account is to cover abatements. It's not to, not to put something in there that didn't go through the budget process. So, if we do this tonight, if it, if the motion is to come out of the overlay account, I won't vote for it.
Well, and my concern too, is, is Doug had alluded to, we have a lot of things that the capital improvement committee, whether it's a forty-two-hundred dollar antenna on top of the public safety building, and other things that are being put off, perhaps because of the new parking up here. And, you know, I just, I'm not real comfortable with it either.
I mean, if, if, I, I think it's, the product is valuable to the town. I have no doubt about that. I have no doubt about that it could be very useful and things like that. And if the board wants to move forward with it, and, and take the money out of the UFB, I'm okay with that. I'm not okay with taking it out of the overlay account, even though it's an accounting procedure. I just don't want to foster that idea that the overlay account is manipulated for items that aren't what that overlay account is for.
Sure, sure. Well, but, but it was done knowing that this was part of the process, so there was no way the expense was going to be done.
And I guess that's what I have a problem with, is that, like I say, the overlay account has a specific purpose in my mind, which is to cover abatements. Unless, so, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong.
Well...
It's not a, it's not a place to, to stick some extra money, because you think there's going to be something coming up in the budget.
Who set up that process?
What process?
Well, the one that you're planning on doing. Is it you and Rick, or who?
No, it was my idea.
Okay.
It was, and it was because the, the pricing came out after the budget was already voted on and done. It came out, it was July or August, I can't quite remember. And so, my thinking was that I could, I could put it in the, in the overlay, and that we could have this conversation. And if it, and if you didn't vote to do that, it would just become, roll into the general fund and be tax relief next year. Owen?
We have three questions, but two of them are related, so I'll keep the third one for later. So, the first one, I'm not sure if you can answer, but in your talkings with Letitia, Letitia?
Yeah.
Letitia, do we anticipate, like we do most things, the cost of this same service a year from now as increasing?
Same price.
It's going to be the same price?
Yeah.
Okay. The second question is, walk me through how, because they're valid points about budgetary constraints and trying to be fiscally responsible with their money. So, walk me through how this twenty-two thousand dollar investment makes your job easier, so you can accomplish more, being more efficient with your time. I'm making an assumption that having this service will make your job a little bit easier. So, can you try to paint a picture how this investment isn't a full twenty-two thousand dollar investment, because it'll be offset by some cost savings through your office, by being able to do things quicker, or?
Well, that's, that's certainly the truth of it. I mean, if I could, if I could show you a video of sometimes me going through a deed and trying to make a correction on a tax map, it is insane. I have no authority to turn a deed down. And, and if I did, maybe as many as fifteen percent of them, I wouldn't accept, because they don't make any sense, or they follow old landmarks that don't exist. So, I spend, spending a lot of time solving puzzles when I'm going through deeds. So, in, in whatever way this can help, like I said, it's, if I can see the stream better, if I can see the stone wall better, I mean...
And in these instances where you can't see the stream or the stone wall, what do you do?
I roll dice.
So, you don't jump in the truck and go and walk on, like?
No, I, I don't have the time for that. That would, that was just a manpower thing that I couldn't do. And I'm not a surveyor, you know, I'd have to have the equipment out there and everything. So, oftentimes, with something like that, I might trust a line that's already there. If I'm, if I have to draw a new line, you know, I'll cross my fingers and do the best I can. One thing that's very important is we don't, our tax maps are not sold as surveys, as perfect-to-the-inch surveys. So, in whatever way I depict a parcel, it's going to be, and I don't mean this in any flippant way, it's going to be close enough. The better the equipment, the better the information I have, the closer enough I get.
I found out that when I was exploring Glen Cove, and I was trying to figure out where the property boundary stopped, because there's water there, and I figured it stopped at the high tide mark. And I had a resident telling me it stopped at the low tide mark. And as I'm exploring MapGeo, it did seem like if you want the creme de la creme of where the actual lines are, you got to go to the county.
Mm-hmm.
Because MapGeo, as awesome as it is, is a higher level, but this would allow us to refine that even better.
Yeah.
And I, that just touched on something that sort of irritated me a bit, when you said you don't have the time to go over and do that. I mean, we're sharing you with Camden now, and if you need to have more time, I'd rather have you back here and doing more for us than to be sharing for both towns. So, I, I really don't like the idea of not having time, you know, because that's an issue.
Maybe I should have said I don't have the expertise.
Right. That's a surveyor's...
I mean, to have me go out and flail in the woods trying to find it.
It's a valid question, I mean, that Owen had asked. And I, and I just think that we need to make sure that we are taken care of as best we can, first and foremost.
Yeah.
I have one other question. So, when you, when you had said that you thought going to the, the six inch would give you the resolution, because when they do it, they did it, what, eighteen inches or twelve, or whatever it was?
Right.
And so, you were somewhat disappointed with the resolution at six inches. Have you seen what the three-inch resolution has looked like, and are you confident? Because what, I just don't want to get into the scenario that you get, open up your new package, and you're like, ah, it wasn't even close enough, it's still kind of a crapshoot here.
I've, I've seen some samples, but not of the type that, that could make me answer that question with a lot of clarity. For example, I, I haven't seen a sample that shows me a stone wall in the woods, you know?
Is there any way of getting that in relatively short order, like from Letitia and the folks on?
I, I could try. That's a good idea.
Because I just, I would love to know that you've looked at it, and you know that this three-inch resolution will help resolve your issues, because it would just be a shame to feel like we're doing the right thing, making an investment, if that's what we choose to do, only to find out that you still don't have the resolution that gives you that time-saving.
That's a good point.
Mr. Chairman, Kerry, is the technology and the ability to, to get down to smaller and smaller increments, is that getting smaller and smaller every time they do a flyover?
No, they offered three inches last time.
Oh, did they? And you just didn't buy it?
Didn't buy it.
Okay.
And, and they were touting it, you know, like Portland bought three inches, and the anecdotal information going around was that their meter checkers could check the meter at three inches. And I think that's an exaggeration.
Yeah. If, I mean, I assume that we have to refresh the information at some point in the near future. Anyway, when was the last, when did we buy the six inch?
Two thousand thirteen.
Two thousand thirteen. So, we're at the five-year point now, where they're doing the five. So, if we bought the six inch again, what would that number be? Pricewise, any idea?
I, I don't know offhand, no. I, I think about, I think it might be about eighteen thousand.
Okay, so, so it's only four thousand dollars more to get the, the three inch, or roughly?
Yeah, true, true. Yeah, but I pulled that number out.
I think the bigger cost is getting the plane flying.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. And the computer technology and all that stuff, right. And, and I just pulled that number out of my head. I don't know if I'm on it or not.
Yeah, I understand.
But there's some cost.
Yeah, there is some cost. There's going to be some cost.
It's a significant cost.
To refreshing the database, which, which we probably need to do at some point anyway.
And to give it some perspective, when I started assessing in Rockport, almost ten years ago, we had black and white, two-foot pixels, twenty-four-inch pixels, on black and white photography. I couldn't even tell if I was in the woods or looking at a hayfield, you know? So, it's, it, it has really gotten better as time goes, better and cheaper as time goes on.
What's your drop-dead date for submitting this? How much time? Do we have any flexibility to address this next month, after you've reviewed the three-inch stuff, and, and after we've figured out exactly where the money's going to come from, so we're comfortable? Do we have a month to make a decision on this?
I don't think so, but I'm not positive. I got an email from Joe Young, he's the Main Geo Library guy, a couple, must have been Friday or Thursday. And I mentioned that we're coming to this meeting to, to seek your approval. And he said, he asked me to contact him first thing Tuesday. So, I think it's a press.
Yeah, if I might, Mr. Chair, I'd like to move to table this till the March meeting.
We have a motion. Do we have a second on that motion?
A second it.
Motion is to table this until the March meeting. Any discussion on the motion?
I didn't think we were allowed to debate tabling motions, with only sucks, because I really want to figure out if, if we table this, have we effectively put it off until next year?
Yeah.
We table it one month?
And I don't know.
Is that actually in effect a year?
I mean, we're, what are we, three weeks away from, from our March meeting?
Four weeks.
Four weeks.
Do we have any scheduled meetings that are library meetings, that we could still notice an agenda item for properly?
Twenty-six, I think.
Well, the twenty-six is a workshop. It's not a meeting right now. I mean, we could make it a meeting if you wanted to, but I would rather not do it on the twenty-sixth. That's a pretty important workshop. I'd rather stay away from that.
I, I think there are enough questions on this, Kerry, and I know we have a motion and a second. But I mean, I would kick this down the road a year and revisit it, you know, next year.
And if we do that, you can include it in the budget for the upcoming year.
And if Camden does it, and you get any crossover into Rockport, you bring that right on.
You betcha.
So, now, seeing as we're still in the conversation part of it, I, I would allow that opportunity between now and, and our March meeting, for any information that would be valuable for us to make a decision prior to, in other words, allowing Kerry some time to find out what Owen was asking, and bring it to us. If he can find, we'll make a decision. If he can't, we move it till next year, perhaps.
Yeah, but it's still going to be twenty-two thousand unbudgeted, you know, no matter how you look at it.
Right.
Table and motion.
Any further debate on the...
Keep us abreast.
...motion of, to table until the March meeting? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay. We'll, if you can get some more information to us in March, we'll take a look at it then. If it's too late, it's too late. But, but thank you for the information, knowing that we have next year to buy it. That, that was helpful.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you.
So, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay. Have two committee presentations this evening, Harbor Committee and the Opera House Committee. And I see the chair of the Harbor Committee sitting out there. If you'd like to come on up, and any other of your members who are there who would like to join you, that would be fine.
I am the liaison to this committee, and I just want to recognize Sam for the great work that he does, chairing this committee. He does a very nice job keeping it efficient, and also being open to everyone's ideas. So, appreciate that, Sam.
Thanks for that, and thanks for this opportunity. Yes, so the, sort of the humdrum, you know, of our business is, you know, space-related usually. You know, as, as always, you know, the, the dock space, the dinghy dock space is constricted. But Abby has, you know, plans, you know, schedules for replacing pilings and working on floats to increase dinghy availability. There's not much we can do about moorings, you know, they just go further out. But that, that's sort of the, you know, the business as usual. The, the new stuff this year has been twofold, and, and moorings is part of that. You know, the, the first thing that, that I'll speak to relates to your all, you gave us input through Doug, that you'd like to see the, the harbor be, you know, funding itself a little better. So, we, we did increase fees as a response to that, maybe two months ago now. You know, the, the comment that I'll make there, that I, that I want to make sure the, it gets passed along to you guys, is you, you guys set up the lease agreements for the schooner Heron, and for the mainly lobster, you know, for them to rent, you know, land-based space as well as dock space.
And the Rockport Boat Club.
And the Rockport Boat Club. You know, it's, it's been the temperature of the committee, and it was pointed out at the time of the fee increases, that when we do those sorts of things, we're looking, you know, we're looking at equal, equal compensation for alike services, say. So, we increased fees on a number of people, but, but else, we increased fees on, you know, some commercial users. And the people that use the ramp, that's sort of isolated, and we feel that we're able to do that pretty equitably, because there's not a, there's not a low comparison base. But the, but you guys have set some pretty low fees for people that, you know, commensurately use, you know, take a lot of expense. So, when we start looking at increasing fees on, you know, charter boats using the dock, and, you know, guys who have a boat that they use for their plumbing operation using the dock, and boatyards that use the dock, you know, we sort of have to think, well, jeez, they don't have guaranteed space, and they don't have, you know, the land-based stuff. And, you know, how can we really ask them to pay more than some of these guys that, that have that, you know, that's being, you know, guaranteed and, and set here? So, so I'd ask, you know, that you think about that a little bit, that, to consider, you know, that how you set those commercial fees affects how we think about what other people ought to be paying.
Has your committee had, do you have initial thoughts on that? That would, I mean...
I, yeah.
You all have had mutterings about something that you want us to change, and you're waiting for us to do it. I'm waiting for a recommendation from the Harbor Committee.
I think you ought to do a profit and loss on the harbor, and see where you're spending the money, and make sure that you're getting, you know, that you're charging the appropriate people, you know, for the services you provide.
Yeah.
I know the Boat Club is, I think, a three-year lease.
Yeah, and we need to find out when the lobster buyer's lease is, when the Boat Club lease is. And, you know, when the time comes, I'm...
Right.
...going to be a proponent for raising those fees too, until we get to a zero-sum budget.
And so, who do we task, who do we task with, with finding that stuff for us?
That's generally me. And I think the Heron lease is the next one that's up?
Next year, I believe, or...
Next year, or this? This March. I, for some reason, I'm thinking it's March of two thousand eighteen. It's coming up.
Is there a way we can tie all these leases into, they get done at the same time? In other words, one, the Heron might be a two-year, one to make it line up. So, you're not doing five different ones, five different years?
Well, there's only three, right? There's only, there's the, the Heron lease, there's the, the fisherman's, the lobster buyer's lease, and then the Boat Club lease.
So, I'm just saying, you know, can, can we do the three of those so that they end up on the same year?
You could rewrite the leases to different terms, so they're all...
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know why, why it would be important that they're all in the same year, but...
Well, it'd be easier for you to, us to...
Well, it'd be, or more difficult, if you have to do three leases all at once. You know, because there is some negotiation that goes on there.
Well, whether you do it in one year, or you do it all in three different years.
I think one of the first steps might be to get, for Rick to get the leases to the Harbor Committee, so the Harbor Committee would have them, and, and be able to make a recommendation, like one way or the other.
And be creative. If you can figure out a way to... And be creative, if you can figure out a way to stagger these things so they all start coming on the same line.
I mean, there is, there is a difference here, I will say that, there's a difference among one of these, and that's the Boat Club, the Boat Club is a nonprofit, um, as opposed to the others, which are profit-making enterprises, and so there's some different considerations to be made.
And, and very little, uh, committee discussion has gone on about the Boat Club, um.
Right.
Does the Harbor, does the Harbor Committee make a, uh, recommendation about the leases?
No, typically they don't.
They have another.
I didn't think so.
It'd be interesting to see.
Yeah.
But I think it's, it's certainly ma- I mean, it's all up to us, I mean, if they were, they're an advisory committee to select where we can ask for their input on that, and I think where they're the ones that are down in the harbor, it's, it makes some sense.
Well, they'd have to get the background, I mean, they need to know what the lease is.
Yeah, I mean, I've got, we've got a sense of it from, from Mike and Ambi about how much it costs to, you know, rebuild the dock or put in a dock and, but there, there's some cost there and, you know, it does feel like, you know, for a, for a profitable operation, you know, to be funded, you know, partially through the town is bears looking at.
And Ken, Ken's right, you know, with the Boat Club, one of the other things is they also do the youth sailing program, so this, this.
Yeah, it's a different, it's, each one of these situations is different and has to be looked at somewhat in isolation, but, but also with the picture of the whole harbor in mind, and if there's intangible value that the Boat Club provides, which as you say there is, because they're providing, you know, some youth stuff for the summer and things like that, then that, that's something that, you know, we can't necessarily expect the town to, to break even on that necessarily because there's a service being provided there, but certainly it, would make sense, I think, for the Harbor Committee to look at all of this in context of the harbor in general and make a recommendation to us.
I'm not sure when the, when the, um, lobster buyers' lease is up.
It's two more years.
Two more years?
Yeah, so the, the Harbor Committee has really maintained, you know, a commitment to seeing things equitably in terms of the various commercial uses and, and recreational uses, so, so, you know, you know, despite, there, there was a lawyer that came to talk to us about the other thing, the other piece of, uh, new business this year, but, you know, he, he tried to point to the town charter as valuing certain commercial uses above others, um, or town, town plan, I guess.
Town president's plan, right, yeah.
Town president's plan, um, yeah, we, we didn't see it that way and, you know, I've held that, you know, commercial uses are all on the same plane and residential uses are, recreational uses are all on the same plane, um, but again, that's, that's for you guys to, you know, speak more strongly to if you want.
Well, the, we're going over the comp plan again, so.
Yeah.
There's an opportunity to check out.
Well, every town committee will be asked to contribute to that probably next year and, and make their thoughts known on the various aspects of the town and the plan.
All right, um, the other thing, you know, so, so the other piece of business that we've, you know, worked on a lot this year started with, you know, a, a boat lying in violation of an ordinance in the inner harbor and, you know, a lawyer coming to the committee and, and trying to recommend a, a very narrowly tailored, um, special exception be, you know, brought into part of the harbor ordinances. And the committee, uh, didn't, didn't go for that, and what we've done is create a, a more broadly focused, um, avenue for special exceptions in the harbor ordinance. Yeah, so, and, and essentially the way that, the way we've developed that is, you know, the special exception process begins with an application to the harbor master, you know, goes to the Harbor Committee for a recommendation or not, but then, you know, goes to you guys for the up or down decision.
Is that ordinance gonna be ready for, to vote?
Yeah.
On this, uh, June?
It is, yeah.
Cause we'll have to have a public hearing on that and, and all that, okay.
Yeah, and it's, uh.
And how do you feel about the solution, cause I know there was some difference of opinion at various levels through the process about how this is gonna work out?
I, I think the committee's all pretty on, pretty much on board with the solution, you know, we've, we've written a special exception with, with input from Jamie Francamano was very helpful, uh, uh, Scott Bickford was helpful, um, so we've, we've written one that really can be ac- applicable to, uh, you know, a lot of the mooring ordinances, uh, not, you know, keeping it separate from peers and docks and that sort of thing.
Town council reviewed that yet, Rick?
Excuse me?
Has town council reviewed that yet?
I'm not sure the status.
Yeah.
They have?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think, maybe twice.
That'll have to come to us next month, I believe, if we're gonna get it on, on the ballot, cause we have to have the public hearing and we'll have to see what the timing is on that, so, okay.
One thing that would be helpful, and not just to pick this one example of an ordinance that's in violation of, but just, there's other examples where people aren't paying for floats and things like that, it would be helpful if Rick would review for us right now, what is the proper enforcement channel that we go through, the steps we go through for when people aren't in compliance with ordinances? This was a, a question we all had at the last Harbor Committee meeting and it wasn't clear to Abby or to Sam or to myself, so I think maybe with the three of us here, okay, just take any example, uh, a float has not been paid for, you know, what happens?
Yeah, we, we did establish that process with this, um, through the lawyer with the, um, the mooring that was, the, the boat that was on a mooring, and we, we sent a letter of intent, a notice of, a notice of intent to file a, um.
Well, wait a minute, go back to the beginning, so I guess it would be Abby says, look, this, there's a problem on the harbor, and so she comes to.
To me.
You, okay.
And then, going through our lawyer, they developed a letter that went out that was basically a notice of intent to say, we're not providing a notice of violation at that point, what we did was the, led, the notice of intent to file a letter, a, a notice of violation, because once you start, file a notice of violation, it starts a clock ticking.
Yeah.
And so, the first step is, you know, sort of just, hey, you're in violation, our only course of action, if you don't correct this, is to file a notice of intent and then it lays out the whole process of what happens then.
How, how long does that last, the notice of intent?
However long we give him, and so that.
Who's we?
The, Abby and I and the, the, um, working through the lawyer, and as I.
So it's you and Abby, alright.
Yeah, and I think the way we structured that one, I, I can't remember the timing, but what, it was because it was in the season, it.
We wanted to get into the November vote, so that was, it sort of.
Well, I'm just talking in general, so, okay, so you give it and a month later, nothing has changed, then what happens?
Yeah, there, there was a time specific that he had to change something.
Okay, so one month, then what happens?
Then there'd be a notice of violation.
Okay.
And then, then it goes to, it, it, he's found as in a violation, and then there's a fine that's assigned, assessed per day that they're in violation.
Alright, and so that goes on for six weeks, then what happens?
Yeah, and then ultimately you end up having to go to court to collect the, the fine.
Does Randy, the police department, get involved at any point?
No, I, I, I believe it would be a court action.
Well, I, I, I mean, I just had a question on that too, because when we've had ordinance violations with dogs.
Yeah, that's a different, this is more, they treated this more, the lawyer treated this more as like a land use violation, remember?
Well, again, I don't wanna talk about this specific.
Yeah, I think the question is more, is more general, in other words.
Depends on the type of violation it is.
Well, Abby, tell us what, you, you had some concerns and maybe Sam you did too, you guys can speak to this, and I just want this to be clarified as we go into the boating season about when people are not fulfilling their financial obligations or whatever.
Right, um, I guess my, when we were sort of just conversationally talking, it was, um, in, in regards to the revenue and, you know, getting numbers sort of after the fact, seeing as that, you know, um, our fiscal year starts in July when season is like going, so, a lot of the times we're not getting the information of people being unpaid until, you know, much, much after those revenues are already due, so it ends up being collected in the next revenue cycle and ends up, our revenues are just off, so, I think, you know, it would be, it's, and I, and I'm working on it now in the off-season to sort of tighten up that time schedule and that, you know, I'm unclear about how, you know, when, so that's something that I think can fall on, on me a little bit more now, that I know that, that I can do that and say, you know, come up with dates and if they don't get met, then we, you know, and I, and, and there was some unclear timeframe to me, but I need to.
That's not a violation, it, that, that is more like you, oh, you haven't paid for your mooring, you don't have a mooring anymore.
Right, and I can drop moorings, my question was, uh, like floats, commercial floats, my major concern is, because we've doubled those float fee, what happens when? We don't have anything in the ordinances, is what happens when, I think I mentioned this with you guys, what happens when they don't pay it and they're, they're still using it? You know, and then I think Randy would have to get involved and there's not, you know, there's not clear.
They don't have a permit.
Steps, right, you don't have a permit, you can't come in and use it, um, and so then I need to know from the front office when they haven't paid early enough to say, you can't use it, you know, boom, boom, boom.
Well, it's, I'm not, I haven't read the ordinance chapter and verse, but it sounds like we need an enforcement section for the ordinance.
Yeah, and we were, working on that.
My guess would be that, that floats would be more town property than moorings are because they're, you know, they're, they're owned by the town and they're not, whereas moorings aren't.
Right, and they're, right, and we're, they're just, they're leasing the space from the town, so, there's actual, a physical sort of thing, and I can go and drop it and they can't use it anymore, I mean, I've done that before.
I, I think Doug's, Doug's question is a good one and, and, and trying to keep it general and not specific to any situation, if there's a violation in the harbor, whatever it might be, I mean, let's say somebody's making too much noise or too much wake or whatever it might be, you know, there has to be a procedure to, to issue a notice and then, and then things happen, um, so that the, the, the situation can be rectified and, and maybe we need to look at the ordinance for that to get that procedure in there so that the ordinance has some teeth in it, I, I like to say, I haven't read it, so I mean.
I, I will say that the lack of teeth in this instance bothered the committee members and.
In which instance?
The, the mooring violation being, you know, unfined and let go all season and seemingly gonna be let go, you know, for the beginning of this season.
Drop what?
Right, right.
But I think, you know, there needs to be, because unfortunately we've set a precedent that's a little wishy-washy, for lack of a better term, and I think, I think we do need to.
Not just to the committee, but around, there's been others around the harbor who've, you know, said, oh, why should I have to do?
Right, so.
And people have come to me and said, you know, well, I'll.
Perhaps that's something we can task the Harbor Committee with, I mean, not next week obviously, but maybe through, through the season, unless, you're the liaison, but it's, it seems like maybe, uh, working on an, an enforcement procedure might be something worth doing.
And, and in doing that incorporates some substantial fine upgrades, I think most of them are like fifty dollars, which is.
But with, with, in that ca- in that case, I mean, that was a difficult enforcement piece because the boat was on the mooring, it wasn't like we was paying for a permit for us to, for him to use a mooring, which we could, we could deny, um, so it's, once he's on the mooring, how to, you know, how do we get him off? Um, and it was, it was a position that nobody wanted to be in, um.
I agree, but if we, if we're gonna have an ordinance, we have to have some way to enforce it.
Right.
Um, and I don't, and in, may, there may be different situations and, and different circumstances, but, I mean, quite honestly, if we get the reputation of not enforcing the ordinance, then we're in trouble.
Right.
You know, we don't have anybody to say, well, so I, I can have a boat here, this didn't happen to this guy, it's not gonna happen to me.
But we did have, there was, uh, when we, we discussed it with town council about what's the best approach to this, town council, we worked out a solution, which was, the first step is to notify him that we're gonna start the notice of violation, and then, once that process start, starts, if you haven't complied, then we go to court, and then we, I can't remember, was it a hundred or a hundred and fifty dollars a day?
That was the minimum to like fifteen, a hundred dollars a day, but, you know, and I, and I had, I got a little bit of counsel the day that he brought, put the boat on the mooring to say, I, I can go drop his, I could, well, all rights, go drop his chain to the bottom and not let him use it, with two hundred people there for his boat launching of the boat that he, you know, built with Rockport wood, we, you know, came to the conclusion that we would go through litigation more than sort of egregious. So, I mean, that was.
Well, whatever the procedures are gonna be, I think we need to set them out.
Yeah.
Oh, I don't, I don't think we wanna be in the, I don't think we wanna be in the situation again of having to go through a particular situation and, and figure out what's right for that situation, we need to have a procedure in place that, that works.
Yeah, we could tighten up that enforcement piece on that ordinance.
Yeah, this happened in Camden, oh, I'm guessing, twenty years ago with a fairly well-known, uh, person in the inner harbor.
He's the Apple Door, wasn't it?
No, it was another one. That, I mean, it was, it, it, it got dragged through the papers and dragged the town for many, many, many months and caused a lot of bad feeling.
We can change the ordinance to allow the harbor master to carry a gun.
Sure can.
Just kidding, everybody, everybody will like.
Some towns have that.
Oh, I know.
Yeah, some, some harbor masters do carry.
Yeah, they do.
Okay, um, anything else, uh, Sam, I think you guys have, you guys had your plate full, so.
I had a question, I was waiting, cause actually enforcement of non-compliant vessels happened to be, talking and texting with Abby today about, and it, it's just, it's, it's an interesting conversation, you're like, the heck's going on with that, do, do you have teeth in the ordinance to go and like, take care of that, cause ugh, and then, you know, kind of informed that there is some lacking of teeth in that ordinance.
There, there is, I mean, you have to prove that, you know, for this particular example, that, you know, he's on his own mooring, there's nothing to say he has to have it out, there's the, the boat, everybody's.
It's got the sail and it's flopped all around.
He's not a danger to others, he's not.
Not a hazard to navigation.
Not a hazard to navigation, there's just, there's few things that I can, you know, other than we don't like to look at it and it's doing damage to his own boat.
I gotta tell you though, I think it was, it was causing that boat to flail around, and I know you've got.
It does go, and it, it does occasionally.
I'm looking at the other boats too, and they were staying a good true course, whereas that one with the, with the sail was just going all over the place. But the question that I had was, on the fee increases that we passed recently, and maybe this is for both, cause I know both of you spent a lot of time in and out of the harbor, what have you been hearing about those increases, were we reasonable in that or is there some not-so-good scuttlebutt?
I'm guessing they don't even know.
Yeah, I, I don't, most people don't know.
Keep, keep an ear out and let us know what you hear.
I've gotten several, several comments about us doubling the mooring fee, but, you know, you'd have to look at, we doubled a certain, certain aspects of, we didn't double anybody's mooring fee.
I could tell you where to go on Friday afternoon at five o'clock and you'd get an earful, but.
Yeah, right.
That's another story.
Yeah, I, I think there's, there is some, I've had a couple people on the committee point out to me that they're uncomfortable with assuming that just because you have a boat, you know, money doesn't mean much to you. There are people that, you know, place a high priority on, you know, a higher priority than you might guess on, on that. So I, I think we gotta be careful around the recreational mooring, you know, fees, that, you know, that's a pretty big part of some people's life.
I think one thing that we left out, and I only bring it up because being on the solid waste board, unbeknownst to me before I was on the board, when we did the last bag fee increase, we had told the community through some sort of channels that you should anticipate the next bag fee increase in roughly five years. And that's something I think would be smart of us to try to be more methodical about it, maybe that gets ironed out as we figure out our profit and losses and, and try to work towards kind of a net zero, financially zero or equilibrium, but I think it would be smart for us to over time build out that forward-looking and be able to say, look, this is gonna be set for the next three years, you're not gonna see anything until either year four or year five or something smart like that, so they at least have a little bit of lead time.
Yeah, yeah, thinking about that profit and loss, I mean, I'd like to be appraised of everything that you guys consider part of the harbor because, you know, the, the expenses and those lease fees don't really show up, you know, on, on our end of things. Um, you know, it's only in conversation with, with Doug and, you know, Abby and Mike that, that I sort of hear about what the, you know, costs are.
We definitely got some things to iron out, we still haven't, I don't think, finished the conversation about what committee oversees what, it's Harbor Park and we have a park committee, yet it's the harbor, so who oversees Harbor Park, is it the parks committee or the harbor committee? And we still haven't even ironed that out.
We've sort of tackled.
We, we've been over it a few times and, you know, the way we've approached it is, you know, we'll take from the high tide line out, um, and are happy to offer opinions on, you know, what goes on.
I think the committees have to work together, basically, that's what it amounts to, okay, anything else for Sam?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the work you do. And next we have the Opera House Committee here tonight to talk to us about this venerable old building and their thoughts, and we have Sonny Fogle here, who I guess is chairman pro temp.
I'm glad I still have my mooring after that discussion, wow.
May not have it tomorrow, you're out of compliance.
Make sure you pay on time.
Okay, thank you for approving our new members, welcome Chris and welcome, welcome Linda, we're delighted to have a full throttle going ahead, which, uh, we haven't had for a couple of weeks. Um, the Rockport Opera House. The Rockport Opera House Committee was reformed by the select board in two thousand nine. And there was a good reason for that because on the hottest day of the year, the air conditioning didn't work. And on the coldest day of the year, the heat didn't work. So we thought it was a good idea to bring a committee back and work on some of these problems. Over time, we've, we've done a lot of work on the HVAC system, on lighting. I'm not gonna read all this, uh, because I think it's getting late. And, uh, just this year, um, we learned that prob- or last year, that the HVA system will have to be replaced after, uh, the select board raised a bond, a sizable bond to evaluate and take care of the outside of the opera house, the painting and the fixing the roof and the gutters and everything, which is a beautiful job, and we're very pleased with that. Presently, the fire marshal has ordered that the opera house has to remove several seats in the auditorium. The Opera House Committee met today and we went upstairs and looked over the twenty-eight seats that have to come out. Probably most of them will come out of the balcony. And it's too bad. It makes our numbers go down, but, um, it's important and it is done by measurement of the area and how many seats are allowed to be in that measured area. So we, we are going to try and have that accomplished by the first of April. The insurance company has required that barriers be installed in, in the front of the balcony for safety. Unfortunately, those that were installed make the front row of the balcony, some of the seats, partial view. The bollards used and may have to be replaced by clear plastic see-through barriers like those at the strand. The committee respectfully requests that in future it be informed when physical changes are made to the building, cause we could've put those plastic see-through on the, on the balcony right away instead of having to replace the ones that have been put there. The Opera House Committee meets monthly and we are committed to this landmark building in the town. I said we were hopeful that we'd get our two candidates, but we are very happy to have them. The goals for the coming year include the following. The oversight of the physical needs of the facility with special attention to the capacity regulations, which is the fire marshal particularly, and the continual, uh, funding of the reserve for the replacement of the HVAC system. Advancing the usage of the building through marketing initiatives and increased rentals to therefore increase income. Now, as you all know, we never will be able to pay for that opera house by increasing income, but we're, we're, we're working on it all the time and Terry is working very hard. She has a new website and people can get in touch with the opera house through the website directly now. Improve communications between the management of the whole, the town officials and the committee through regular meetings, increased membership and timely notifications of any issues concerning the facility. Long-term goals. Address the issues of handicap accessibility. There is a big request for a tiny little, some kind of bathroom i- on the, in the auditorium. And the only place that would fit probably would be under the, the right-hand side, if you're looking toward the stage, under the stair where there's a little closet there. And we're gonna work on seeing if we could get a facility in there, a very small one. But a lot of our elderly people can't make it down the hill to, to use the, the.
Well, you have an architect.
Restrooms down here.
You have an architect, right?
Yes, that's, oh, he's gonna have a lot of business. We need a replacement for the current lift, which changes bulbs way up high in the air. And the one we have now is very dangerous and was given to us by the school when they rejected it. So, uh, we're working on that as well. Terry has gotten lots of different prices for lifts that are safer and maybe smaller and wouldn't take so much part of the, uh, part of the room. Replacing the HVAC system, of course, is big on the, on the, uh, future. Outdoor lighting on the facade of the building, we've talked about a lot. We're delighted to have Chris with us cause he can help us figure out how to do it the most effectively. We need both to have lights on the steps, but we would like the facade, now that it looks so beautiful, to be well-lighted at night, which would be nice, cause it's a landmark building in the middle of the town. And offer, our final thing we discussed today is offer streaming services as a rental option for people who rent the opera house, which is really great to have. Thank you all for working so hard and getting that equipment in the opera house. So we're moving ahead step by step, little by little.
Do you mean streaming services for, uh, performances?
Either performances or meetings or whatever.
In other words, if somebody were to rent this room and they wanted the streaming capability, there would be an extra charge on the form and they would take it off and we'd provide the technician and.
Down here, you have to have one staff upstairs. You need to have two staff and you charge for them. And then there'd be an overall charge for the streaming service itself.
Wait, am I correct though in saying that if we wanted to, cause we, we livestream town meeting?
Yeah.
And I know it's a pain to move this stuff from down here to up there.
I believe.
It seems like we already have the capabilities to accomplish that. It would just be adding an additional line to your fee, fee schedule or whatever it is.
They have, go ahead, Terry, tell them.
If you'd come up, Terry.
Plus, I believe we're working towards getting that, uh, hardware installed now so that it's just a matter of moving cameras.
Cause as long as you're comp for your time for setting it up and it's all part of the fee, we have that capability already.
It's great. The infrastructure's already here. We, we've been working on it and doing it for, for, what, two or three years now? So we have people trained and ready to do it. We're already doing it. So it makes sense, I think, from a financial standpoint to, let's see if we can offer this to the public.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Totally.
And we can do it upstairs now too.
Yep.
No.
Well, it's, it's a lot of work and what we're doing, I believe we're, we're buying out of this year's budget the equipment we need to be able to do it from, not have to move all the equipment up, up and down the stairs all the time and just livestream from down here and ha- and do it remotely from upstairs.
So we're, that's exactly right. We're going to be doing some rewiring in the building that will allow us to just, all we have to do is move the cameras upstairs. We don't have to move that desk, a very expensive desk.
And every time you move that, you run the risk of it getting damaged.
Right.
Yeah, we'll wait until you have the new equipment up there. We won't damage anything.
Right. Yeah, those, those cameras are pretty much plug and play. They just unplug and come off and they can, I believe there's a place to, for them to sit right now, isn't there?
Upstairs, yeah, that's already built in. Um, the biggest part of this project is gonna be getting to connect the audio upstairs to the desk down here. And I'm also being able to control the cameras from down here as well.
But it's a tr- it's terrific addition to the facility. It's really great.
Sony, with the two new tonight, you have five on the committee, is that correct?
Yeah.
Um, was that committee previously seven? I'm trying to remember.
It has been seven.
Okay.
But, uh, not, usually there's not seven there.
Okay. I just wonder if, if the bylaws say seven.
The bylaws say, uh, suggest five, but they say any odd number.
Okay, then, okay, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure because if your quorum is, is set to the number, then.
Right.
If it was set to seven, then you'd have to have four for a quorum and then with a committee of five, that'd be difficult.
Right, at one point we thought we might be getting seven, but then we lost a whole bunch of people at once, so. No, we're, we're at five now.
Okay. And then the other comment I had, this was actually came from, uh, the library staff, like up Ben. You talked about lighting, uh, and one of the comments, and I'll say, I think I mentioned this to Rick previously for budget purposes, is lighting of that, the pathway down to this room outside.
Oh, well, that's, right.
Would be, would be very helpful. I've, I've heard that from library staff, that it's difficult for people coming to a program here or even to our meetings at night if that's not lit very well.
Okay.
That it would be good to have that as well.
But we'll, uh, we'll attack all those things at once.
And as it relates to exterior lighting on the front facade, I know that Dave Jackson, this is probably a year and a half ago or so, I think after we had finished restoration, that was something that he had looked into on LED from bottom-up lighting. Uh, so I just throw it out there as if you wanted to talk with someone who is already.
He's on the committee.
Oh, well then.
And, and we've been, we've had, gone back and forth on this quite a lot. Dave has looked into some of it. John Priestley, who was chair of the committee before, wanted something that would bathe the whole front. And so what, what Dave was trying to do was get those, there are lamps that don't light on the building already. But I think we're gonna have to supersede them with something else. But we're in the middle of it. And I promise to, that's a good suggestion about these, this lighting of this pathway.
Any further questions for the pro tem chair of the Opera House Committee?
Okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you, Sony. Okay, we next need to appoint the general assistance administrator. That's a fairly straightforward matter, I believe.
I move to confirm the appointment.
To confirm. The appointment of Diane Hamilton as general assistance administrator for the town of Rockport effective January first, twenty eighteen.
Second.
A motion and second. And this is, uh, to replace Stacy. Rick, it actually is the department head, so as a department head, Rick appoints the department head. The select board confirms. Uh, as I understand, Diane has been doing some training and has been assisted by Linda.
Both Diane and, and Linda, you're gonna go to the second part of the training as well, correct? Okay, so both of them will get their certification actually. And the way it's worked out is the, Linda will get a, now get a stipend for also for being, uh, the deputy, uh, GA administrator.
What is, if we're in the conversation, what is the stipend for that position?
For which position?
For the general assistance person. And how will it be divvied out?
Off the top of my head, I don't know. I don't remember what it was.
It seems to me Stacy's was a little over five thousand.
Yeah, it's less than that.
It's like fifty-one hundred or something like that.
Yeah, it's less than that. It's, um, the, the way the stipend is, the way I have it arranged is that she gets a stipend now from the January first till when she gets, um, received her certification and then her certification, the stipend will go up. But it, it's still less than what we were paying Stacy.
And that's not paid separately? It's incorporated into their weekly check?
Yeah, I think it's paid monthly. And the same thing, and that includes paying, paying, uh, for the GA administrator and the deputy is still less than, it's still under what we had budgeted.
And that, and that's, and how does a deputy get paid? I mean, they're assistants.
The same, the same.
When they're needed or?
No, no, they just get a, they just.
Annual stipend.
They just get an annual stipend.
And I'll just make a quick comment here to give kudos to both Diane and to Linda because originally when Stacy left, we were having Camden help us with that. And then, and then that ended rather abruptly and, and made for a difficult situation for, for those two ladies in the town office. And they, they really worked hard, uh, under some difficult circumstances to get that done.
They had a really difficult case and I have to say, you know, I can hear through the door and it was a really difficult, yeah. But they had a really difficult case the other day and they did an amazing, the two of them did an amazing job. Thank you.
Should we, should we also incorporate Linda as the deputy? I mean, you're.
No, you don't, that.
We just, we just confirmed the department head.
The department head.
So Rick can, Rick can assign whoever he likes.
I'm already Stacy's assistant anyway, so that's what it's called before.
Right.
My only thing on it is it's awesome that she's getting certified and I, and I want her to have that March fifteenth class even earlier. I just, this is for you and for Diane. This is only my thoughts. I'm not your boss. But, um, finding additional training or more things to have you all be more effective in that job, cause I'm sure I could take an online course on how to be an awesome firefighter, but until I've fought a couple of fires and then had the ability to debrief with a career firefighter, you know, I'm still not gonna be able to be amazing at that job. And so I guess just the, the training part is the thing I'm throwing out there, but the curiosity part of me says, when you get into something that maybe is more nuanced than the certification, who do you call? I mean, other than Ghostbusters?
We call the Department of Human Services. There's a very intelligent gentleman, Jerry, who gives us guidance and we have access to the, uh, Department of Human Services portal so we can check what they're getting for benefits, et cetera. And anytime we have any question, we call Jerry and he calls us back within five minutes.
Great, okay. I feel a lot more comfortable.
And membership in the GA administrators, um, association, they offer a lot more training throughout the year. As you remember, Stacy was the president of that organization for cer- many years.
Yeah.
And they, they do have a pretty extensive training program that they offer. So while this, there's the certification standard, they also have, I think it's probably every other month, there's some kind of training going on someplace for GA administrators. Diane went to, as it said in my comments, she went to one, uh, in November, I think it was November or December, that was helping GA administrators with things that were specific to winter issues. You know, unfortunately for Diane, she didn't have any background in it, so a lot of it didn't make a lot of sense to her at the time. But just the, the first certification program that they both went to was very helpful and I'm, I'm assuming the second will as well. And they'll probably continue to go to other training.
Great, thank you.
Uh, any further discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes. Next item, determine the scheduled meetings of workshops for the library. We have in, in the original timeline, a workshop scheduled on February twenty-sixth, uh, which was in the timeline, delineated the preliminary presentation, or presentation of the preliminary concept plan for the library at this point. And that's gonna go on. That will happen on the twenty-sixth. Uh, the way that we're gonna structure that workshop, and it's a joint library committee select board workshop, we're gonna start it at six-thirty, but we're gonna have a half an hour of sort of open time. Um, the architect is gonna bring some large drawings of the various aspects of the plan and, and Tom and Doug have been working as, as we've gone through it, but that'll give a half an hour for folks to just come in and look at it. And, and the architects will be here, uh, library staff, are you gonna be here on crutches or?
Yeah.
Yeah. So there'll be some time for people just to have some time to really just look at it and have some conversations amongst themselves and ask some questions and things like that. And then they'll be, uh, at seven o'clock, uh, the architect team will make a presentation. And we will take public comment at that meeting. And that meeting is, workshop, I wanna make sure it's a workshop. That public comment, my mind, is very important because we're at the stage now where we can make some changes, if the changes need to be made. Um, and so I'm hopeful, we have sent a press release out about this and I'm hopeful that everybody within the sound of my voice, uh, will make an effort to actually come. And yes, the meeting will be livestreamed, but it will be a nice meeting to personally attend and be here and, and so that we can hear what people think about the plans as they are progressing. And it is a work in progress. I wanna make sure that everybody understands that, that it's, it's not, nothing is set in stone at this point. Uh, the group is going down a road and, uh, and I think we wanna hear from the people whether we're going down the right, whether they're going down the right road or not. At this point, um, we'll sort of see where we are after that. And as far as scheduling, I had some other workshops on the schedule beyond that. As you recall, we did have one scheduled for early February, which we determined that we didn't need because we had had the one that was fairly well-attended and there weren't gonna be any specific changes. But there likely will be some additional times where we can have some public input and, and the entire select board will be able to get together and assess how the plan is going. So that's, um, that's where I am with that. Does anybody else have any comments or thoughts on that?
No, just I think the next, after February twenty-sixth, I think that the next, uh, sort of big date is March thirteenth, when Ledgewood gets back to us.
I think so, yeah.
So sometime I, you know, after March, maybe in early March, we'll have another meeting and we'll have some hard figures by then.
Right. One of the agenda items for that workshop on the twenty-sixth will likely be just to firmly schedule the next workshop. And by then we'll have a better idea of how things are going and we can set forth a schedule going forward so that people know, uh, what the next steps will be. Okay, any further comments on that item? More informative item than anything?
Do we know that Ledgewood is on the thirteenth?
I think that that's when they were gonna finish their review of the budget. We don't have a meeting scheduled at that point. That's when they were gonna finish their, they had.
They were supposed to provide us with the numbers.
Have their estimate numbers available by then, so hopefully. Hopefully by the twenty-sixth, we'll have a better idea for that, and then we'll be able to schedule a meeting. And I think I probably had some on, on the schedule for that timeframe, but I'd rather look and see how we're, how things are going.
No, that's good, thanks.
Next item is library fundraising update. Doug and Rick and I have been out there shaking the bushes for people, and, and we have gathered together what we're calling a steering committee to develop the fundraising plan, the private fundraising plan, and John Veman has stepped forward and is at this point kind of leading that, although he's not the chair of that committee yet, the committee will eventually choose their own chair. But tonight, I just wanna say that process is ongoing, and we've got some good people involved in that, I think. If anybody out there would like to be involved, then John might be the one to talk to at this point. There probably will be a core committee, which we're calling the steering committee, and then later we'll see a larger fundraising committee evolve out of that, which the two may not be mutually exclusive, but one of the first tasks of the steering committee will be to work on engaging a professional to help with the private fundraising. Now Doug, do you wanna say anything about that?
Yeah, I mean, I think that the, the core group, it's been some work getting people, A, who had the background, B, who had the time and the interest to help. But actually, after today's, some emails went back and forth, it, it sounds to me like our core committee is pretty well set up here. We have John Veman, Peter Ralston, Ann Philly, Bill Leoni, Betsy Salt and Stahl. And it's my understanding you were able to convince Joan today?
Well, it wasn't only me, Joan talked to both, to Peter and to, and to myself, and she's gonna be involved, at least on the steering committee. She may not go beyond that, that's why I say the steering committee may, may morph into a different committee, but, but yeah, Joan has, has agreed to, to help out and to contribute where she can.
One, two, three, four, five, six people, and Cheryl Lickney, I reached out to her, and she said she might be interested, and she wanted to talk to Ann Philly, and she'd get back to me this week. So I mean, right there, you've got sort of seven people, and, you know, that's a pretty good core group, and I don't think you're gonna wanna get, you know, ten or fifteen people on that core group, it starts to get hard to make decisions, so.
And I think these two will depend on each other, I think you'll get one.
Yeah, I, I, yeah.
You'll get one of them, potentially?
I think the core group is pretty well set, and I'm hoping that I can step back from this now, and you and Rick, and let them do their stuff.
Well, and that's absolutely the plan, is that this has to be a truly private fundraising effort for a lot of reasons. That's what the town is, is gonna want, and, and, and secondly, when you get into the actual fundraising, there has to be some expectation of, of privacy and confidentiality among potential donors, and so, where the town, the town really can't be involved in that, so yeah, I anticipate, the next, this group is getting together on Friday. As it turns out, I'll be out of town on Friday, so I'll miss it anyway, but I think after this Friday, and Doug and Rick, I think, may go to that meeting on Friday, I don't know what your plans are, but I suspect that after that, if this committee is up and running, that, that the town presence will, will melt away from that committee, and that committee will then work on its own. They'll choose a chair, and, and they're gonna do some work, and things of that nature, so I'm pleased that how that process is moving along.
My only, 'cause I, I don't wanna waste too much time on it, and I'm sure that they are, they're a group of highly qualified professionals. The only thing that I've kind of had concerns is with the town melting back in a way, which I think is appropriate. I just wanna make sure that the committee, the fundraising committee, has put enough safeguards into where the community can feel confident that the money they're giving is going to a properly secured, properly accounted for account that, and I know, and I, and I want the head shakes, that's all I'm looking for, is that they're gonna make sure that, if I give you a hundred grand, you're not taking eighty of it.
I should be careful about that, because the, the committee will work with the town finance department, so that the money is, you know, the money, the money will go, probably pretty quickly, I don't think the committee will hold it at all. They'll have a procedure in place, so that if somebody writes a check, they'll be able to take it to the finance director, and it'll get foot in the right place. Okay. We've already done item H, we have item I. Consider offering the structures on the town-owned property at six forty-seven Rockland Street for sale. If said structures are removed from the premises, Owen called me and asked us to be on the agenda. And I know that Owen and Mike and Rick have been working on this for a while, so I'll let Rick introduce this item.
Yeah, this has been, Mike has spent a good deal of time on this, but it's apparently, I can't remember your name.
Dave Herrick.
Dave, Dave is here in the audience, but we have interest from him to take, get the building off the property and move it to a piece of land that he owns just up to the street, you know, across Route ninety, but it's, it's just up the, up the street, apparently.
It's not, I wouldn't say it's more than a quarter mile.
About a quarter mile, yeah.
About a quarter mile.
Opposite side.
We're moving a house.
Just above Rollins is on the same.
It's, we're moving a house on two really busy roads.
I used to live right across the street from there.
But it's, the idea is that he would take the building off the property, we have no use for the building. The, the building that we would potentially have a little bit of use for is the garage that's there, 'cause we're storing equipment, storing stuff there. But, so this, this will tie in to what we're gonna do with the, the land, we talked about the land, the Butters wanting to purchase that parcel of land. So.
Nelson Tolman?
Nelson Tolman's, yeah, and so this will tie into that into some re, to some aspects. According to town council, the disposition of the building, you know, if it's not a, if it's not a sale of the building, if it's, you know, if there's not a sale of the real estate, it's the disposal of the building, there's enough gray area that that could be done under the powers of the select board. But it is, you know, could be considered technically real estate, but he said there's enough gray area that the building could just be disposed of. Similarly, is if you, if we decided to burn it down as a training exercise, that's, you know, the building goes away.
Yeah, if we burn it, or we demo it, or whatever, that, that's clear, but it is to me, and I'm not a lawyer, and I don't play one on TV, but it is, it is the sale of real property, in other words, if the building is gonna remain intact, that would require us to go to the voters, with a town meeting article.
I mean, we've gotten rid of fire trucks before for a dollar.
That's not real estate.
That's not real property, it's a difference, a difference in the definition.
But it's town property.
Yeah, it is, but.
I think you have a similar gifts that have been done.
Right, but this is real property, as opposed to fire trucks are different, it's, there is a difference.
Fake property.
What, what, I mean, we will receive some tax benefits once it's located somewhere else.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, all I'm saying is that it's a process of how we have to do it, and I, I think that we probably need to have a town meeting article that just specifically authorizes the select board to, to sell the, the buildings on that parcel. And I, I don't, I don't think that's a big deal.
And I, I view this proposal as a very worthy thing to consider and hopefully support, because if we demo it, that's additional cost to us. If we burn it, it's not an additional cost, but you gotta pay to do certain things.
You still have to get rid of the stuff that's left.
Yep, and under this proposal, or potential proposal, so we don't have to pay to demo it, we don't have to pay to burn it, and we don't incur any costs for them to take the building, put it on their property, and then we get to tax it, which I...
So this would go to a vote in June?
If we, yeah, and, and there's some other issues that I wanna bring up with it, and that is that...
What, I haven't finished yet, so this would go to a vote in June?
Beyond the, if, if we decide to put it on the warrant, yeah.
So, and then what happens if the warrant, if people say, well, wait a minute, I wanna buy that house?
Well, that's, that's my point, actually, is that I think prior to making any agreements, that we would need to authorize Rick to look into this, and also to advertise it, to make it known that, yes, we are selling the property. The condition of purchasing the property, the house, is removing it from the property. Because you're absolutely right, what we don't wanna do is, is make a deal with one particular person, no matter who he is, and then have somebody come and say, well, gee, you never offered that to me, I'd give you, you know, more money for it, or I'd do something like that. I think the reality of the situation is...
We'd have to put it up, is there a way to auction it even?
I, I think we can just, we just put an ad in the paper and just say, in a period of time, we'll accept proposals for removing the building, or something like that, and then people can come in and say, you know, well, I'll give you a thousand dollars, and some of the, the conditions we may put on the removal, removal of it would be, you know, taking care of, of the basement, the foundation, getting rid of that, and, and making sure that the utilities are properly dealt with, any, any septic system is properly dealt with. I know when Rick and I spoke, there's possibly some use of the septic system by the West Rockport Fire Station.
And interstate was just there today, and I would love to, that is a completely off tangent, but at some point, I wanna see the report on how good that, that septic condition is, 'cause that's what we had talked about, potentially jacking the fire station into.
Right, exactly, that's why we're...
And it's at the back, so if the building was taken, we don't do any damage to the septic system or leach field, 'cause the leach is out back, so.
So, and it's not really any of my business, but, so given all that, it's worth it to you to move that building up the road?
Is it all right if Dave comes up?
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, and, and part of that, not only is it worth it, but waiting until June, is that going to hinder or change his mind?
'Cause he's got significant prep work, just trying to prep you, he's got significant prep work to do on his property if he's gonna move that building, 'cause you're not putting a basement in after you got the building up on a wheeled vehicle. You need that basement in before you even pick the vehi, the house up.
Well, let's let Mr. Herrick, let us, if you could just tell us your, your thoughts on the subject, I would be great.
Well, first of all, to answer your question, as far as it, is it worth it to me? I think so, I've done a lot of research, I've, I've moved two houses already, so there's nothing new to me. A lot of it will hinge on what you think you're gonna require from me financially. For me to move that, I'm gonna put a house on this property, which is quarter of a mile up the road. You know, I've, I've put one up there already, no big deal, the road's there, power's there. I'm gonna put a house up there, be it that one or a modular. So I have to consider the cost to move it, which I have a pretty good idea, the cost to renovate it, to bring it up to code, because as it is, I cannot rent it, which is gonna be my purpose of moving it. I mean, there's several issues as far as, I mean, there's not even any bathtub or a shower in this house. I don't know if any people have been in there, but the stairs are too narrow, you know, egress from the upstairs bedrooms, the lead paint issues, things like this. Walked through it with my brother, who is in the construction business, so I have a pretty good idea of what it's gonna take, you know, to redo this, so short answer, yeah, it's probably gonna be worth it.
Filling in the cellar hole that's left behind.
Well, this is gonna be a point of contention, possibly, or a point of discussion. We'll, we'll see about that, it's definitely, it's one thing I considered when I, I first thought about it, and, you know, we'll see, the, the, all of the cost of this, and especially the unknowns of lead paint, you know, old house, you know, lead paint's expensive to deal with.
What about the, if we don't get approval from the town to do this until town meeting, which is the middle of June? Is that timing gonna work for you?
I would prefer it to be a lot sooner than that, just because, you know, foundation-wise, the people that do my cement work, it would be a lot better for them if I could do this in April, you know, quite frankly. It won't, I'm not gonna say it will kill the deal.
Yeah, okay, well, I mean, one of the things that we could do, I'm just thinking outside of my, and, and Ricky, you can tell me if I'm full of it or not, but certainly it seems as though we could advertise for proposals to remove the house, and, and, and make a decision on the proposals that come in, and if you wanna, if your proposal wants to say, well, I propose to take the house and do all the stuff, and I'll give you a dollar for it, that's fine. My guess is, and I don't know, but my guess is there aren't too many other people that have a piece of property at the proximity that you do, near there, that are...
Probably not.
That wanna put a house on.
If somebody has to move it four miles instead of moving it a quarter of a mile, that increases the expense dramatically. And so my guess is that we're probably not gonna have too many different proposals. But I, but I, but I do think as the town, we do have to put that out there, just to make sure. But, so, so if we put a deadline on that of, say, you know, the end of March, just to pick a date or something, and, and then you can review them and select the proposal, and then, and then we still would have to go to vote, we could technically call a special town meeting, I suppose, if we wanted to, or, but if you knew that, okay, you're the, you're the one, and it's just a matter of waiting until the vote in June, that might make things a little bit easier for you, because I can't imagine, there would be, there would be no, this would not be a town meeting article with any expensive money. It would just be authorizing the select board to sell.
How much did it cost for us to demo the vacant property on Route seventeen, the old trailer?
It was a couple of grand.
Oh, it's three or four?
I wanted to be, we had about forty-six hundred bucks in demo in that. This is a little bigger structure, it's gonna be a little more material. The town does own the trucks, so you're not gonna have to pay for the trucks, but if we, if we took care of the whole end...
Well, that's where it was going.
Did, did, took it to the transfer station, you're probably gonna have around five thousand bucks.
I mean, that's where, where I'm going with that, is, I mean, if, if we were gonna have to do that and pay that money to demo it, I mean, you know, I'm not gonna be so eager to, to charge and fill in in the hole. I think we could probably find some gravel somewhere to put in the hole to, just to get rid of the house, number one, and it's gonna be cheaper than us paying to demo it. You know, I think that's not a bad idea.
Yeah, it's just curiosity, when you've moved your other houses, did it require an excavator at all? I'm just wondering what machinery will be on site for the house moveal that may be beneficial for filling in the hole, but I can't conceptually think that there would be an excavator there.
The first one, yes, there were two excavators, the second one, no.
What's the foundation of the house, is it stone, or is it concrete?
I think it might be concrete poured over stone, front of stone, I think.
Yeah, some of it, yeah, and some of it's cinder block.
Hodge, it's just a big hodgepodge of everything.
I mean, another factor, it's smaller, but it's one worth considering, is you're not taking a house and filling the dump with it.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's...
We don't have very many years on that.
What we can do on the, at this point, at the board level, is I think we, even without a vote, we can tell Rick to explore the possibility and come up with a proposal, and maybe you can evaluate, you know, how much do we have to have done? Do we have to have the cellar hole filled, I mean, from the town's point of view, we have to make sure that the property's not left in a hazardous condition pretty quickly. So what does that mean, does that mean, you know, getting the foundation out of there, does it mean filling in the hole, and then taking care of the utility, whatever it does, so I, I think, if I see nods across the board, it seems like this is a reasonable thing to do, and reuse the house instead of throwing it away. We don't want it there anyway, and, and as Owen pointed out, it'd become taxable property, so.
I'll tell you one thing, though, I think you're gonna have to knock that chimney down. The chimney, by code, sticks up higher than the peak of the roof. I think you're gonna have to take that chimney down to clear those wires.
Well, I'm not gonna reuse the chimneys, if I do this, if this, if this all works out, it'll wind up being heated with propane. So chimneys will be gone.
I just noticed it stuck out higher than the roof, and I was like, geez, those lines, you're gonna have to take that off.
It's, it's, it's gonna be a bit of a challenge, but it's doable.
Okay, so I think having a, having Rick look into it, and like I say, it's important to me that it be offered to others with the proviso that they have to remove it, so like I said, that's gonna narrow the field pretty dramatically to anybody who's gonna want it, unless they've got a property right next door that they want it, that's where you have the advantage there. And I don't, I don't think, I mean, we probably have to have a dollar to make it, make it a legal transaction or something like that, but I don't anticipate that this board is gonna be looking for huge dollars for, for this, so. Okay, any other discussion on this particular item?
Just keep in touch.
Okay, thanks for coming in tonight, that was real helpful, very helpful.
All right. Questions, call me.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the last item under new business is to discuss the relationship of non-resident property taxpayers of the town. I put this on at the request of Doug, and I have to say that over the years, I've had some issues here as well. I've had people call me, we had the harbor committee in earlier. People who perhaps own a sizable piece of property in town, pay a lot of taxes, but don't live here more than six months a year, so they're not registered voters, and they end up having then to pay non-resident fees for things, and, and perhaps have other... and, and perhaps have other barriers. And I'll let, uh, that's all I'm going to say. I'm going to let Doug talk to this because he asked me to put it on. So.
Well, the background is, is shortly after the election, when I was elected, uh, I did have some people approach me just about this very issue. And it's people that, uh, own real estate in town and they pay whatever their appropriate taxes are. But then they get charged extra fees for various, uh, for other things such as the mooring. You have to pay twice what a quote resident does. And also there were people, um, that felt that if they're paying this amount of taxes, they really don't have an opportunity to have any input into what the town government is doing. And I think as you all know, we fought a war over that back in the seventeen hundreds. When this came up recently in regards to the, uh, the town mooring, I actually did an informal poll. I spoke to people who are friends of mine, so that may be a, uh, you know, a certain cohort. But they universally felt that it just wasn't fair. That if you pay real estate taxes in the town here, you shouldn't be charged extra to enjoy a mooring in the harbor than other people. And as I did a little more exploring, and I brought this up several months ago, so this has just been, uh, percolating is, I think, uh, two recommendations I would like to come out of this. These aren't motions, but these would be my two recommendations. Uh, the first would be, uh, I think we should have a special select board meeting, uh, this summer. When a lot of these folks are up in the neck of the woods and just have an opportunity to have them air, uh, what their concerns are and have a chance to meet us and have a dialogue. Uh, I think that would be a, a good use of, uh, two to three hours of our time, uh, for a special meeting for them. And then the second recommendation, and this came up at the harbor committee meeting, and indeed the harbor committee also agreed, uh, with me that I suspect next year, uh, we're going to change the fee structure so that, uh, these people pay the same fee as people that are quote full-time residents, um, here. And I, I don't know whether that'll mean that, uh, the fees will go up for some people or if it'll go down for these people. But, uh, just level the playing field there. The interesting discussion, you know, we can have is what, if you pay real estate taxes in this town, what does that entitle you to? Well, police protection, fire protection, uh, road maintenance, get your, uh, road plowed. Does it entitle you to the same access to a, a harbor mooring? Most people I've talked to say yes, but obviously I'd love to hear what other people think.
I think it's a decent point, Doug. And I'm curious about how other towns might handle this issue.
Camden, uh, actually the non-resident taxpayers, I think they call it something else, do pay the same mooring fee as, uh, residents. Um, I went up and I looked at their harbor.
I wonder if there could be, um, actually a, a greater benefit in that if we're looking at people who are looking at basically buying a second home, a vacation home, and they're trying to choose the town in which to do that. They may be more inclined, perhaps with the things being equal, to make that investment in a town where they have greater access to these things. And that can in turn increase our tax base and the, the benefit can come back to us. Of course, that's, we could be hurting ourselves if other towns are allowing, allowing this to happen and we're not. And that might encourage, incentivize people to buy property elsewhere. So.
One person I spoke to did say that, you know, they said, you know, it's not really the money. It's just that it seems sort of unfriendly of the town, like, you know, taking advantage of people.
Well, it's, uh, I'll get to you in just a second. Um, this issue came up, I, I brought it up several years ago and, and in respect to the harbor fees, actually. And it, and nobody else at that time, people weren't interested in, in exploring it. One of the reasons that it is the way it is right now, as far as, you know, the resident fees and non-resident fees, the way the resident fees are determined is if you're a voter.
Right.
And one of the reasons that that happens is because it's easy. It's the easiest way to do it. If we decide to move away from that, we do have some things we'd have to work on the structure of it. Because there are people who pay, uh, the non-residents actually pay, I believe, somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, pay more than half the property taxes in this town.
Yeah, I don't know what the number is, but it's a substantial amount.
But on the other hand, um, you know, we have to think about the various different situations. For example, somebody who owns a weak timeshare week in the Sammaset pays ten dollars in property taxes a year. Now, does that person, should that person be able to have a mooring in the harbor? You know, that, you know, there are some issues there. And I don't, I'm not necessarily advocating what the answer to that question might be, but there are some gray areas there that we have to think about. That's one of the reasons that the voter test has been there for so long, because it is easy. But on the other hand, somebody who owns a recently expensive property on the harbor and spends four or five months a year here. You know, it seems to make sense that they ought to be able to, to do that. Now, we can't help them as far as, they can't vote at town meeting. That we can't change. That's state law. We could think about allowing to speak at town meeting. Right now at town meeting, the only people who can speak at town meeting are town residents. Unless we make an exception, which we almost always do because Rick is not a town resident. And so for Rick to speak at town meeting, we have to give him permission to do that. So we could, we could invite and make it clear that some of these non-resident taxpayers could speak at town meeting if they wanted to. I mean, town meetings are not typically very long.
Again, I just want to clarify on that too. Yeah, and that's fine. But, uh, again, I think we should have sort of a special meeting to recognize these people.
Yeah, I think that's.
And, and really have a dialogue.
Linda wanted to make a comment.
All I was just going to say is years ago, we did allow people who are taxpayers to pay the resident fee. And then it was changed to voters, for whatever reason, the ordinance changed. But personally, I think it worked really well when it was taxpayers and it never did, um, include the timeshare owners.
So you didn't have any issues with it then? You didn't have people taking advantage of it?
Definitely not.
That's good information. Thank you.
Do you know how they, how they deline- how they delineated out the timeshares?
I can go back to the old ordinance and find the wording that they had.
There's got to be some sort of box that they check too, that will make it easy for you to consult or constrain it. If you've got like your Excel spreadsheet or whatever, I'm sure there's got to be some sort of timeshare.
We have access to the tax records. So it's easy for us to look it up to see if they are timeshare owners.
Any further?
My, my two cents is I feel like this decision has already kind of been made for me. As we've gone through a lot of different conversations about how we disseminate information to the public. I feel like the previous board had talked about, well, do we send stuff to people that aren't voters? And for me, the answer has always been, of course you do. Even though they can't vote on whether we allocate this bond money or not, if we allocate and bond money is approved, that's hitting those taxpayers. And so I have very much viewed these, the taxpayers as enjoying a lot of the same privileges that full-time year-round residents do as well.
So that's a sense of the committee. That's good.
Yeah, I think that's good. And then, and then we can work on, you know, getting a scheduled meeting for the summer. That may fall into the purview of the next select board. Um, so we'll see. But I think it's a, I, I think it's a discussion that's long overdue and I'm glad you brought it up.
I'm just going to grab some water.
Okay. Speaking of water, do I have a motion to go into session as wastewater commissioners?
Regular water, not wastewater.
Yes, I move that we exit our role as select board members for Rockport and enter our role as wastewater commissioners.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Um, we have the wastewater commitment for the first time in a while and we're doing these quarterly now rather than monthly. I just want to make sure that the number in the agenda agrees with the number on the sheet that we're going to sign.
Now, I've asked before and it's been explained, but I can't remember. It seems to me as I look at this that, uh, I, without mentioning any particular, uh, individuals or businesses, that I often see a lot of the same ones on here. And I've been told that that's, in most of these cases, nothing to worry about. Is that the case?
Yeah, I mean, this is just a complete list of the, of the billing. This is the commitment. It's, it's, these people are not past due or anything like that.
Oh, so when it says thirty days, start getting concerned when they get to ninety days. Cause it's thirty, sixty, ninety. Yeah, yeah.
It stops after ninety, doesn't it?
Well, it's only thirty days on this particular list. So I think this is just the commitment of the, uh.
More of the other.
This is just the commitment to bill these people for their usage.
And, and not all of these people are hooked up. It's just it passes by their.
Right.
Right. If they have to pay the, uh.
Is that the forty-nine? If I see a forty-nine, is that just a user or the?
That's just a, an equivalent user fee, which is a debt service capital management fee.
What do I have to do to get on this list?
We paid it.
So, yeah, this is, uh, it's, it is what it is.
You really pay that much for thirty days worth of?
No, that's, that's, that's quarterly.
Yeah.
Oh. What do we need your motion or?
Yeah, we need the motion to, uh, well, to.
Let's see. I move that we accept the sewer user slash.
I'll have, I'll have, it's, it's a motion that's written in here. So I'll let Doug do it.
Move to commit the August, September and October twenty-seventeen wastewater user slash debt fees totaling one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two dollars and seventy-eight cents to the treasurer for collection.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Quick, quick question. What's, uh, so I'm tracking with that number, the one fourteen, three, three, zero, fifty-four. What's, what's this?
That's November and this, October and December.
Okay. Do one, okay. Awesome. No issues.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? None. Okay. We now have a whole bunch of quick claim deeds. And I, a lot of them. And I don't know whether we have to do these individually or.
Put your speed reading hat on. And my only thing, because we haven't seen these, so I, I, this is one of those instances where I'm like trusting the town employees. I just, they're not part of, they're not part of the packet. I haven't put eyes on them, put me at ease.
These are, these are, um,
Sorry.
It's okay.
Situations where somebody failed to pay their wastewater and by, by vote at town meeting, the town has the ability to put a lien on their property if they haven't paid their wastewater, uh, funds. And then, um, I don't know whether they haven't, have they got a foreclosure if we have to do the deeds?
It's according to state statute that this is done. And it's, it's basically the same as real estate taxes, which you probably all are familiar with. There's a thirty-day notice. There's a lien notice and then it goes to foreclosure. And what has happened with these particular quick claims? Are they possibly two or three years old? They never were discharged of their liens, although the payments have been made. So the way of clearing those are doing a quick claim deed instead of a lien discharge.
Okay.
So they're, they're all paid?
They're all paid in full.
They have to be or we couldn't do the deed.
Right.
Yes.
So Linda, do you know if we have to do them, if we have to act on them individually? Cause we don't have any suggested motions in the packet tonight.
I think you probably could do them as one motion, but just mention each of their names.
Names or lot numbers or is there a way of doing it without the names?
Seems to be a pattern there.
And I had a quick question. So these are all the folks that have paid. We kind of, we, sometimes it happens. I get it. We, we miss a stack of stuff and then you pick it up a year later and you go, oh, this stack of stuff. How many other people were in that stack of stuff that haven't paid us? Or has everyone, everyone that, that required lien was put on has paid in full?
I can't answer that question because I do not do the sewer liens. I do the real estate liens, but they work the same. So Megan asked me to explain them to you, so I don't know.
And these all have tax liens associated with them, which basically puts a, a claim on the deed. So we go through and, and we have to vote to remove them. So, um, I want to make my stab at a motion here. And this will be a long one.
Make a landing pad for all of them when you're done.
I move to, uh, execute quick claim deeds for the following, uh, property owners in Rockport having to do with liens placed on them because of wastewater.
Can you do it just by address?
Well, I was going to read the names.
Can we do it just by address?
I think we have to say.
They're in the name of the individuals, how they have to be released, not the.
Okay. So you've got the motion so far, Linda, and I'm just going to, I'm going to read the names. Okay? Mary Dennison. Patterson Mobile Home Park LLC. Another one for Patterson Mobile Home Park LLC. A third one for Patterson Mobile Home Park LLC. I wonder if I need to do the map, maps and lots on these.
Cause they're different properties within the property.
Yeah. I think I better, I'm going to start over with the names. I'm going to, I'm going to mention the name and then I'm going to give the map and lot. Okay, Linda? Sorry. So starting over again, and it's still in, in the process of making a motion here. Mary Dennison, map twenty-seven, lot one forty-seven of the tax maps of Rockport. Patterson Mobile Home Park LLC. Uh, map zero-one, lot thirty-dash-nine-twenty-one of the tax maps of Rockport. Patterson Mobile Home Park LLC, map zero-one, lot thirty-dash-nine-two-zero of the tax maps of the town of Rockport. Make sure it's not the same one. Patterson Mobile Home Park LLC, map zero-one, lot thirty-dash-nine-one-five of the tax maps of the town of Rockport. Tell me to slow down if I need to, Linda. Christopher and Sandra Moore, map twenty, lot one sixty-nine of the tax maps of Rockport. Patterson Mobile Home Park LLC, map zero-one, lot thirty-dash-nine-one-four of Rockport. Estate of James McMahon, map twenty, lot one thirty-one of the tax maps of the town of Rockport. Patterson Mobile Home Park LLC, map zero-one, lot thirty-dash-nine-zero-six. Patterson Mobile Home Park LLC, map zero-one, lot thirty-dash-nine-o-four. Patterson Mobile Home Park LLC, map zero-one, lot thirty. Patterson Mobile Home Park LLC, map zero-one, lot thirty-dash-nine-two-five. Robert Winiges, W Y N E G E S. Map T zero-one, lot B zero-four dash zero-zero-eight. That's probably a timeshare. I'm not sure. West Street Market, map twenty-six, lot zero-seven dash zero-zero-one. And finally, John and Lori Bridges, map zero-three, lot ten. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we execute that stack of quick claim deeds.
So, question, as I'm saying, one of those I think has not been in existence. How old are these?
Cause West Street Market.
Uh, there's some of them go back to two thousand and fourteen.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Are we going to be able to, oh, they must have already paid then, if they're in that stack, they already paid. Okay.
Yeah, they've already paid. So. Okay. Uh, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? None. Okay. The only other item I'll mention under wastewater is that I am working with Scott to freshen up the sewer regulations a bit and explain the fees a little better. And I anticipate having that proposal on the, uh, agenda for our March meeting.
I move that we exit our role as wastewater commissioners and re-enter as select board.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? None. Okay.
I move that we adjourn.
Uh, we have liaison reports.
Oh, we have liaison reports. I table my motion.
We'll give you credit for trying.
And we have a ton of stuff to sign. We have to sign every one of those quick claim deeds along with some other things. And I'll start the birthday cards rolling around as we start our liaison reports.
I'll start, get it out of the way. Uh, harbor committee, uh, is what you heard tonight. Planning committee, I don't believe, planning board has not. Planning Committee, I don't believe, Planning Board has not met. And I have been having trouble making the Comprehensive Plan Review Committee meetings because I've been out of town and whatnot, but I'll be trying to be more active in that in the next few weeks.
Midco-solid waste, maybe I'll do midco-solid waste, and I'll grab those later. What do I want to say about solid waste? What do I want to say about solid waste?
We're doing a really big redesign. We've been working with Woodard and Curran to look at the options.
We would have been at a place to vote on it, but our last meeting was canceled.
Yep.
They've given us three different options to kind of look at.
It's, the three different options are basically sort of patch and keep it the way it is, make some modest improvements, but keep the current design.
Which does not necessarily enjoy cost savings.
No, it doesn't help us achieve any savings.
We don't increase the amount of, one of the big things that we've been trying to gear towards is being able to haul more trash with one truck, because we're hauling at a greater distance now. So the more material we can put on more one truck, the, the more money we save over time. Oh, the, the big thing is, like we had mentioned earlier, it seemed like every one of the folks, before we even picked Woodard and Curran, we asked every one of these folks, should we go to single source or continuous source separation like we have it? And basically, everyone told us, single source. It's, you can start doing curbside pickup. It moves people through your facility a lot easier. It increases and encourages recycling. It makes it easier to recycle. And with the tip rates for recycling being so low, if you can remove that stuff from your waste stream, you start saving more money. Well, the big gear and the, wrench in the gear was when the tip rate for single source went skyrocketing high. And that's something that we have very little, if no, control over. So it's, it's making the decision a little more difficult for us. I, I think that we'll probably end up settling with single source because we don't know exactly what the market will bear out over time, so hopefully this is a bit of a hiccup. But that's a big thing for us. We, in the new budget, we increased the bag fee from $2 to $2.50, which is a modest fee increase, but we, we held off for, what, five years? Five years without increasing it, and so now we're getting to that point. Tom, what else did I miss?
You hit the highlights. The other, the other thing is that, you know, it's within fairly short order that we will have filled up the landfill.
Seven years or something.
Does anybody know if we have started to recognize any savings from the?
Yes, the gut project?
Yeah, right, filling up that area.
We are right on the cusp, I believe, of the year's worth of data, which is what we've been waiting for to compare year over year. And from everything that I've been able to gather, that we don't have the final numbers on it, we are enjoying some very significant cost savings from not having to pump and treat as much out of the quarry.
And do you know, will that quarry continue to fill up so that at some point it's like a pond? Or do we just get up to a new level where there's another leak?
That's one thing that we're monitoring and keeping an eye on. The, the level did rise, but it appears to have stabilized a bit. But as we've gone through this facility's redevelopment, that is something that we still don't have the spring kind of influx yet. We don't know if more stuff is gonna clog up smaller fissures over time, making it more, you know, watertight. So one of the things that we're doing is they know basically where the spillway would go. And they're basically going to monitor it. And we should have some very good data on what that quarry's gonna do as we're developing to figure out if we need to put additional spillway capabilities in, or if we feel confident that it's not going to rise to a level of flooding and spill over into stuff.
Should I return the water skis I got for Christmas?
No, they're always still useful. They're always still useful.
As it comes up, okay. Thank you.
Pathways, I was unable to attend the last pathways committee meeting, but I did connect with Jeff Scott. One of the things, this is a blast from the past. Remember like two years ago, I was talking about trying to put something that said, if you do a easement for like a trail, a multi-use trail or something, then based on the length and the width and some parameters about what the easement allowed for, you could enjoy some modest reduction in property taxes because you have allowed the public to use your property for a multi-use pathway. We explored that. It became complicated, and so it just kind of got shelved. However, as Camden continues to move forward on the Riverwalk, having another tool in the toolbox of trying to get easements for these trails would be a useful thing. So they're again reinvigorating the conversation of seeing if either Camden or Rockport Select Board would consider if you put some land into, not conservation easement, but if you allow a pathway easement, that you would enjoy, again, a very modest reduction in property taxes for that use. We've been looking at a county in Washington State, which is one of the few that does it on the local end. Because I think they do things on the county end versus the, the small municipality end. But that's basically the update for, for pathways.
We have basically heard from the Opera House.
Yeah.
They've had, I think, it didn't really come out in their presentation, but the, the issues around getting sort of butts in seats on that committee has been extremely serious. So I and everyone else is certainly gratified that we're now up to five. And in particular, that one of those five is someone with architectural experience. Because as you could hear, there are architectural issues going on with that facility, with this facility that we're sitting in. And then the library, of course, the big issue is the construction work that Doug and I have been sitting in on, the planning. And that goes on apace, and I think the process, I think the progress is really rapid.
ORC is working well through their season. We're actually, have accomplished a fair amount, and the season will be winding down soon. Cemetery met a couple of weeks ago.
You did!
And, yeah, there, there will be an item coming to the board in March on the agenda. Cemetery wants to extend the moratorium in Sea View Cemetery for probably another three years. And the idea is going to be there that they will come with a three-year plan to get the columnarium constructed. So that we'll have that as an availability. And once that's there, that that would be offered to non-residents as well. We have another workshop scheduled sometime soon, I think, to, to look things over for that. So that's good progress there. Legacy Rockport has been meeting and trying to reinvigorate that group and get things going and get some new members there to make people aware of what it is that Legacy Rockport can do. And basically, what they can do is help projects that are valuable to the town. One of the ones that they're working with right now is Simonton Corner Hall. I know you were somewhat close with a few people there. But something like that. And, and we can help them by allowing to be a pass-through because Legacy Rockport is a 501(c)(3), so people who may want to donate money to rehab that hall because it's of, of value to the town of Rockport can do so. And also can realize a tax benefit by going through Legacy Rockport. ZBA has not met, and ambulance review is ongoing. We did pass along at the last ambulance review committee meeting the thought from this board that a one-year contract with an option would be the way to go. And I think that's where the managers are going with that.
Is that, because I, I watched that meeting and I, I felt like, I know you brought it up, but I felt like it was kind of half-dismissed, but you're saying that the managers.
I think that's where they're, they're working for.
One with an option for the second?
Yeah, with an, with options.
I'm cool with an option. I'm totally cool with an option.
I, I had a question on the, on the cemetery one, which has been bugging me ever since that pile of dirt got put there on Route 17 next to the Rockville Cemetery. Years ago, there was a pile of dirt there with the intentions on leveling it out and expanding the cemetery. Well, since then, the trees have about 20 years' growth on them. And the pile of dirt we had there with intentions on leveling it out never got leveled out.
I'm assuming that cemetery is not, is full. On, the one on seven, Route 17, right next to the pond?
There's a couple of them out there.
No, so Rockville is made up of actually kind of three different cemeteries.
Yeah.
There's the old cemetery, which is further down 17 towards Augusta, which is closer to the pond.
Yeah, I'm thinking of the one that's.
Then, within the new one, there's the old section and the new section. And the new section actually has a huge amount of expansion. If you go further down, there's.
There's a lot of empty spaces.
There's a lot empty further down. But what you're talking about, because I cleaned that whole cemetery, what you're talking about is if you're looking at, off to the left-hand side, kind of in the tree line, we also own that property?
That dirt, that pile of dirt that has trees growing out of it was put there with the purpose of leveling it to expand the cemetery at some point in time.
Well, that'd be a question for, that'd be a question for David, I think.
He can use it to fill in the cellar hole.
Exactly. Well, that's funny, right? It's just down the street.
Good thinking.
So, okay, Prax, we already talked about the ambulance, Prax Committee. The latest thing that I've been working on is trying to get, and this came up with Dave Jackson last fall. And I'm in the process of helping make arrangements for Andre to finally get his nose properly back in place.
Andre to get a nose job?
He's got his nose out of joint for a while.
He's gonna have his nose.
He's gonna have his nose done.
There's a, there's a gentleman in Woolworths that was recommended by a business in town. Short story is, at some point in the near future, he's gonna come take a look at it. I've talked to Sonny and Dave already, and they are eager. And when he gets here, I will let them know, and we all can get down and take a look at it.
And along that same line, the fellow out on Route 90, I just got a call back from him today. What's the name of the monuments? Brooks Monuments.
Bobby.
He said that it's gonna be a difficult job. He said he'd be willing to look at it. He said if we had somebody that was more interested, it wouldn't break his heart for us to, to go with them. But, so at least we have a couple of people, though, that can start to give us some information.
Yep.
And it should not go unnoticed that a handful of us participated in the Toboggan Nationals.
That's true, too. Yes.
And I will own up to my part of adding increased wind resistance. We lost to the town of Camden by one one-hundredth of a second.
The agony of defeat.
At some point, we need to figure out when we're gonna trundle on over to Camden with our hat in our hand and tell them that they somehow did a good job, even though I'm still convinced they cheated. They have the home field advantage. They did something. I don't know.
We tried to get them to go first, too, and they.
We tried to.
Yeah, they wouldn't, they weren't buying.
And it was because they had the system calibrated for cheat. And so if we flipped it, they would have had to calibrate it for not cheat.
Well, good, good for you guys for riding the sled. I was, I would have done it, but I was away. I was out of town this year. But it's, it's always a lot of fun. And, I don't know, they already have the trophy. We don't have to bring the trophy over for them.
There's the humility factor. You gotta go and humble yourselves.
So, well, I'll talk to John and find out what he would like to do as far as the presentation.
Don't talk, John wasn't on the Toboggan.
I know he wasn't. He said he wasn't gonna be, neither was I.
Yeah, well, you don't count either.
All right. Any further business?
Leaving it up to the vice chairs.
Now I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you all very much.